I'm calling this meeting to order this committee of the whole meeting at 6:00 PM in council chambers. We have no remote electronic attendance. You note one appointment to replace a recently appointed person on the planning commission, and I do believe we have public comment. Do we have anyone in the audience for public comment? No, I do have some emails to read. Actually, because they're emails, I could postpone them to the end.
Sure.
Why don't we do that? Actually, no, I'm gonna do it now. They're pretty brief. Okay. This one is from Judith Cape, sorry, Elaine Capel. Voicing my support for the proposed improvements to the Riverside Pool complex. We love our Moline parks and frequent them often. Unfortunately, our pool facilities fall very short of what neighboring towns offer, so we visit places like Whitewater Junction and Rock Island instead. It's due for us to invest in an attractive and useful swimming facility for families in Moline. This will help, this will keep Molineers in town using Moline facilities and will also draw others into our town to enjoy what we have to offer. Keeping it as is is not the direction we should be heading for quality of living in Moline. I support the proposed upgrades to Riverside. Thank you for listening to my comments. Number two, from Amanda Augsberger. As a resident of Moline, it is very disappointing that surrounding cities have more attractive and exciting amenities. This is especially true for the pool. Right now, there is very little incentive for my family to visit Riverside Pool when we have access to Whitewater Junction and Rock Island and Flashlighting in Bettendorf. Having more amenities will help keep Moline residents in the city, show possible new residents that the city is investing in families, and bring revenue from residents of surrounding cities. Moline used to demonstrate that they care to keep young families by finding resources for affordable recreation. Thanks, Amanda Augsberger. And lastly, Sandra Reich writes, "My name is Sandra Reich. I've been a Moline resident for thirty-seven years. My earliest recollection of Riverside Pool was the size of the facility. Not only was the pool huge, it offered everything you can wish a pool to have: water slides, diving boards, and actual deep end baby, excuse me, baby pool. The changing rooms were large and the concessions offered a variety of snacks and small meals. Riverside became my home away from home every summer. We would ride our bikes down through the cemetery and stay all day, day after day. Families had a facility that appealed to everyone and could come spend the day, use the pavilions to grill out, add, and return for more swimming. Sadly, with the changes made to Riverside Pool over the years, it no longer flourishes. I often drive by what looks more like a spray park for toddlers. I think the proposed changes are exactly what the city and this park needs to compete with surrounding areas' aquatic parks. We take children across the river for a taste of what we remember going to the pool to be like. Tennis lessons at Riverside were also something that my family and neighboring families participated in, too. It was a great sport to learn and play over the summers while school sports had ended. Over the years, the tennis courts haven't been updated and the bathroom facilities are often locked. I think with the proposed changes, the city will have no problem drawing people back to where most remember some of the best times of their lives as children and can share that with their own children." Thank you, Sandra Reich. So that's public comment. Any questions on the agenda? So we move to the first item, adoption of pension obligation bond policy.
Turn it over to Carol.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. The policy before you tonight sets forth the city's commitment to diligently fund its unfunded pension liabilities efficiently and cost-effectively through the issuance of pension obligation bonds, recognizing the risks associated with such, and adopting procedures to mitigate against those risks. And this policy was recommended by Spear Financial, and it helps document the current council's understanding and intent of issuing P O D bonds, as well as to offer guidance to future councils if and when refinancing ever takes place. And as we mentioned in our council letter, rating agencies tend to look very favorably upon policies like these. So it's a perfect timing to bring this forward for council's consideration with our rating call coming up on Thursday. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Move to approve the bond policy?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Wentz, second by Alderman O'Brien. Discussion? Mr. Wentz?
I just want to thank Carol for, and the team for putting this together. I think that this is a really good framework. Because this is a big decision that we're making, but to make sure that it's clear what we're doing, putting guardrails on it, I think this is terrific. So thank you for putting this together.
My only question on the Article II, Section A, where we just have approximately three percent, the estimate for that minimum return that we would need, would we then be bringing that back to amend afterwards, or would it just be staying with approximately three percent?
It would basically be for an update. Yeah, because the benchmark will always be against that number unless the actuarial rate of return would happen to change.
And I'm hoping we're making that number lower.
Yeah, Alderman Schmidt, if you go to the very last item, Item K, I added that, which basically requires that they review it annually so that decisions are made appropriately and on time.
Anything further? Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, because ultimately, without this, if we were going the other way and we were repeatedly under three percent anyway, we'd be dead meat either way. So we'll have, we'll have bigger issues if we're hitting that as a society.
Thank you. All right. Hearing no further questions or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. I believe we do have several others this evening. Mr. Schmidt?
One of the issues that has come up relates to the I-74 corridor agreement that we have with IDOT, and this relates very specifically to action that took place back in March of 2016 when the Honorable Scott Reyes as mayor executed a memorandum of understanding with IDOT, and this was with relationship to the landscaping plans that were approved by the council at that time. So in March of sixteen, they entered into a memorandum of understanding, and it basically spelled out what the obligations were going to be, both of the city as well as the state of Illinois, IDOT. They are now looking to bring that forward November one today with the Honorable Sanjita Rayapati as the mayor and reiterating the agreement that we had. So it's basically taking the existing agreement that was there, bringing it up to date. There are no material changes to what they're doing or what their obligations are, or ours for that matter. So they're just looking for it to be renewed.
Do you want to make a motion to renew the document with the mayor's signature?
Is there a second? Is that, was you, or a question?
I have a question.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
And they refer to it as a letter of understanding as opposed to a memorandum of understanding.
That was the motion by Alderman Waldron, second is by Alderman O'Brien. Discussion? Mr. Wentz?
So I think I remember what you're talking about. So just to give everybody a little bit of history, and Mike may remember this.
I'm still an employee.
Yeah, this was the night Scott Reyes, or Scott Hinton came to us at the council meeting, had not provided us with the document in advance. He may have emailed it to us one minute before the meeting started, got up there, said, "You have to adopt this tonight, or the bridge will be delayed a year," basically. And so we, basically, we had absolutely no choice. We had not reviewed it. We were, we had no opportunity to ask any questions about it because we hadn't actually been provided it at all. And so we did pass it that night because that's what we were told that we had no choice for. My question is, if we tabled this for a week so we can actually review what's in this, what is the downside? Because again, we haven't seen what this is, and I think that it would be good for this body to actually be able to read through it before we again rubber-stamp something that we're being told at the very last minute with no review that we just have to do. So is there the ability that we table this for a week? Or did the same thing happen to us where we got things the eleventh hour?
My understanding, and again, I wasn't here in 2016, but based on meetings that I attended with Joe Coolenbeck, now with DOT, when the agreement was, when the original landscaping plans were submitted to the city, the original landscaping plans called for a lot of ground cover, a lot of green plants, shrubs, trees, you know.
And that was like a day.
That's what's the plan. That plan ultimately did get rejected because the maintenance responsibility for that and the ongoing replacement of all the trees and all the shrubs and all the grass, anything that dies, falls on the city. It was the city's responsibility. And at that time, the city wasn't in a financial position to be taking on any additional obligations like that, according to my discussions with Alderman Waldron. And they came up with a new plan, and the new plan was to eliminate a lot of the shrubs, the trees, the grass, and everything that would be below the bridge, because below the bridge, nothing's going to grow. That's one of the big problems, because the bridge goes north and south, and of course, the sun is coming this way, and you're never going to be able to get things to grow. So it was the right decision to do something differently. Of course, what they, what they came up with and ultimately was a plan, was approved back then, was, you know, using modern landscape materials, basically different color differentiated rocks and stones and concrete, and just different approach entirely, much more of a Florida approach frankly, to doing something under a bridge as opposed to what we do here in Illinois. So they came up with a plan. That plan ultimately, this council did approve it, and then there was a memorandum of understanding signed by then-mayor Reyes. Now, what this is doing, this particular agreement, when we look at it, you know, and I'll just read his paragraph. It says, "The Illinois Department of Transportation has prepared contract plans to complete the landscape contract in conjunction with the I-74 corridor projects. Previously, a memorandum of understanding, see attached Exhibit A, was signed to outline the support from the department to the city of Moline to pursue landscape improvements along the corridor. This letter of understanding will outline the maintenance responsibilities for landscaping contract located under Interstate 74 just south of the Mississippi River to just south of Twenty-seventh Street in Moline, Illinois. Scope of work included in this metric is placement, and this is where it defines it, is the placement of rock mulch ground cover in curved patterns with concrete edging to retain the mulch. The placement of hardscape elements, including decorative rock treatments and edging, softscape elements, including seeding, planting of trees, bushes, plants, and placement of wood mulch, install stormwater treatment and connections to the stormwater management system herein referred to as the urban park area. Upon final field inspection, the improvements to be constructed with this project, the city of Moline agrees to the maintenance responsibilities related to the urban park area. Items include, but are not limited to, mowing, reseeding, pruning, weeding, watering, care for or replacement of all plant, shrubs, trees, rock elements, much of all kinds, mulch of all kinds, and storm sores related to the city of Moline's collection system. City of Moline agrees that all covenants contained in the previous agreements, memorandums of understanding, and letters of understanding related to city-owned utilities, maintenance, electrical energy, enactment of ordinances, et cetera, and the section to be improved within the city limits shall remain unchanged. And that is your acceptance of this letter shall be considered as your approval of all terms described herein." And that's basically reiterating the agreement from the past, and I think this is probably an outgrowth of discussions that were taking place where people were probably pulling back. There was, there was literally people pulling away from the original agreement, and they probably were aware of that, and they decided at that point, no, we have to reconfirm this now and solidify that original agreement so that they can go forward, because the contract is, you know, it's out there, and it's set to go in the spring.
Mr. Waldron?
You just answered my question. I was wanting to know why IDOT wanted to redo the agreement, and I just answered.
I think that's the reason why.
So it's not, as far as I'm understanding you, it's not reopening the memorandum or agreement?
No.
It's reiterating it. So we are bound to follow through? Is this a correct understanding?
That's.
Okay.
That's why it's a letter of understanding as opposed to a memorandum of agreement.
Got it. Mr. Wentz?
I guess I got multiple questions then. I mean, if it's already a done deal, then
Done deal.
why do we have to do anything? I mean, this gets back to the exact same question I had that night with Scott Hinton, which maybe Mike has a better understanding. None of those issues, and maybe it had happened before I came on council. I was elected in 2015, but there was not one discussion at the council level about the landscaping or any of those things. It may have been done with staff or whatever. And not until that night, when he showed up and said, "Hey, oh, by the way, we've got this thing, and it has to be approved tonight, or the bridge does not get built this year, because they're going to miss the letting of whatever." And the only thing he talked about that night was that there was a change of the retaining wall coming down Seventh. He said, "We are then gonna, we are now going to be responsible for this retaining wall coming down on the Seventh exit." You can go back and look at the minutes. I'm sure it talks about this thing. And that evening, I said, you know, this is completely irresponsible to come to us without giving us the opportunity to look at this, and he said, "Hey, it's IDOT. I just got emailed it fifteen minutes ago," and so that was the reasoning at the time. We had to and felt that we were behind the eight ball. We didn't want a situation which the bridge was not going to be get built, because that's what we were told. But now we're in a situation where there must be some kind of reason that they're coming back. If this was already a done deal, there would be no reason for action here. And so that's what I'm trying to understand, because if there is the opportunity that we can tweak this in any way or form, I think that we've all had some discussions that there are some things in that that was agreed in 2016 and before, what I would say underdressed a little bit, but that we want some consideration of if we're going to do the skate park or make some kind of park underneath, that why waste all this money? And maybe we can work with them and utilize those funds to coordinate something that is good for everybody, rather than them spend all this money and then us come through a year or two later and completely rip it out and talk about the worst of what government is, is doing things like that. And so what I'd like to do and to move is that we table this until our next meeting to actually have that conversation, review what we're obligating ourselves for, and make a decision on how we want to respond or amend this.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Moir? So we got a motion by Alderman Wentz, a table, second by Alderman Moir. No discussion, correct?
Correct.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Need a roll call, please? Alderman Waldron?
Nay.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Nay.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Nay.
Moir?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Nay.
We have four ayes and four nays, Mayor. I'm gonna say, I just have to vote, and then I will explain. Nay. The motion failed. So we're, so back to the motion on the table, which is you to, actually, do we talk? You just brought this up as informational, or not informational, but we don't have an actual motion to move forward to sign it. Or we did, we did, we got you guys. Thank you. I just needed the reminder. So I will say, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Ms. Elias, but we did talk about this in our bi-weekly meeting, you and I. You showed, was it you that showed me? That was not you. I've seen pictures of the winding underneath. Was that PMT? That was you and I. My understanding is, well, I completely understand your context and the desire to not waste. My understanding is that we don't have a choice. We have to move forward. So I don't mean to put, I should ask you that.
Ask me what?
We don't have a choice. We have to move forward because the memorandum has already been signed, a agreement has already been signed.
I mean, I think you do have to move forward, but I think the issue is the train, this train left the station in sixteen. And in good faith and reliance on that memorandum of agreement, this, the state went ahead, designed, and spent all the money based on reliance that the city was going to stand by that agreement. And I've seen the engineering drawings for this project. They're there. They wanted them reviewed. I remember having discussions with Alex about it, and I chuckled, because I said, "I've never seen anything quite like it." But the reality is, is that that was going on long, you know, long before, you know, ULI came to town and the whole concept of a skate park. So it begs the question, and I don't disagree with you, Alderman Wentz, that, you know, government spends money only to tear it out and do it again. That is true. But I think the problem that we're faced with is that they want this going to be done in the spring. They're going to wrap it up, button it up, and they want the project over. Now, it does not mean that the bridges aren't down yet. Those come down over the next year, year or two, and then you got to take and do all the landscaping work. So it begs the question, if we, if we, years from now, go out and there's a skate park that gets built at that location with their approval, remember, it's going to take their tacit approval to allow you to put that skate park there, which we don't have. We don't even really have true design costs that will tell us what the cost of this would be or how it's going to be funded yet. So there's a lot of maybes and ifs out there. And while this landscape is sitting there, it's going to sit there until we do make those decisions. And then the question is, is can you repurpose a lot of the aggregate that's going to be laid? You know, because everyone's thinking grain and recycled, and you repurpose everything out there that you can. And what you can't, you can't. I mean, it's just not possible. But I think a lot of what's going to go out there can be repurposed, and we can use it in our park systems. We can use it wherever we want, because it will be attractive and expensive material. But I think they're looking for an answer. I think it's the skate park discussion that probably brought this up, and I think that's what's driving it, without them physically picking up the phone, calling me and saying, "We need this letter of understanding for the following reason." That didn't happen. The letter came in, it went directly to the mayor, and that's why we're bringing it here, because we, at least at one time, there was an MOU that was signed in sixteen that came before the council. We wanted this to come before council as well, and that's the reason why it's here. But it doesn't mean the skate parks that, it doesn't mean any of those projects are dead, but it means that this is a commitment that was made, and now how do we get past the commitment and work with them to bring about a different alternative that's going to be at our cost anyhow, down the road?
Okay, you've spoken to this item twice, but I'll give you this one more comment.
I appreciate you letting us debate this. To that point, though, we had the exact same issue with the cul-de-sacs. We were told they were completely engineered, they were in the bid, they had already been bid out. I mean, this hasn't even, I mean, this hasn't even been bid out yet. It had been bid out, and only because we pushed back and said, "This is a complete waste of funds." Because they were going to build these cul-de-sacs, which then we were going to have to either be responsible for or then come back in and tear out later. We were able to work with them and remove them. I mean, it took us actually acquiring a piece of property and getting agreements with different property owners, but it can be done. We were told that it couldn't be, but I know for a fact it can. And so that's why I'm asking, even though it failed, to postpone this for a week so that we can actually have this discussion and ask staff and say, "Hey, we'd like to figure out a way not to waste federal money, not to waste state money. There's enough of that happening." Because if we can find something that is mutually beneficial, that'd be great. And I sure as heck am not going to vote for something tonight that none of you guys or that I actually read. We're being asked to vote on something. It's been moved and seconded, to vote on something which we have nothing in front of us to actually read or to review. I think that that's, that's the worst type of government. And so you guys can do what you want. I can't support this. And we have an example of how we have changed this in the past, just recently. You can, you can ask Ms. Elias about it. It wasn't easy. We had to work through and make some adjustments and figure out a way to do it, but we did. And that was even after it had been bid out. This hasn't even been bid out yet. So I reject the idea that this train has left the station. We can do better and we should do better.
I'll try your hand, Ms. Christopoulos.
Yeah, so I did look at the current letter of understanding, and it does not obligate us to anything more than we are already obligated to. So while I agree with you that they presented this without a lot of backup, this does just reiterate our previous obligation, which I believe does not prevent us from negotiating something different going forward. What they are asking for is to reiterate our agreement from 2016 and not increasing it or changing it. So by not doing that tonight, it does not free us from the original agreement. So if we want to look forward and maybe renegotiate or change things, we always have that option.
And I have a question then for staff, before I recognize him, Mr. Schmidt. Something has to be put there before we would know what we're doing with a skate park or any kind of development underneath there, correct? So this plan in motion provides us with the landscaping that's needed, because otherwise it's just bare ground and could turn over in an unappealing way. Mr. Schmidt?
I tend to think that I am in support of moving forward with approving the letter, but I'm not willing to do that without reading it and without reading the backing material. And I keep, from the first time it came up, that's been my thought all night, and nothing has changed that opinion. So I mean, I would request that if we are going to take this to vote, that we take a recess to allow us to read the actual memorandum of understanding that we're reiterating, because I will not vote to support something I haven't read.
Anyone else? Sorry, was there a hand?
Yeah, which I think Alex may have something to add.
Alex, feel free if you feel comfortable.
Thank you, Mayor Rayapati and Alexandria Elias for Moline. I find myself in the awkward position of having probably eighteen months of experience talking about these types of issues when perhaps our own staff hasn't. So with that apology, I appreciate Ms. Christopoulos's perspective that this is not something that can't be changed in the future. I guess I would just ask that, you know, this I-74 area is your most important redevelopment opportunity for the next fifty years, probably. And so whatever happens tonight with this, I think it is incumbent on all of us to start embarking on what those pieces of the puzzle are. They're complicated. There are land development issues. There are environmental issues. There are regulatory issues. There are all of those things. So my sense is that they're looking for your reassurance after a long period and a couple of different councils and a couple of different mayors, that we're still on track for those improvements. Administrator Vitas and I have had conversations directly with their engineering staffs. They're very willing to work with you. They're very willing to make adjustments as it makes sense for the city in the future. I would just press upon you the need to really start chipping away at that huge iceberg very soon, because it's going to take some time. I don't know if I can offer anything else in particular, Mayor. That's my perspective.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Vitas?
Really, I'm just presenting what was presented to us, and, you know, there's actually three or four pages here. That's it. And I read the letter.
Yeah, I mean, I hear what you're saying about wanting a recess to read it. So you're saying that him reading right from the letter is not enough for you to understand what's going on?
No, because I'm not going to reiterate. I mean, I feel as if I understand the letter. That's not the problem now. I have not read the memorandum of understanding. And I'm not going to agree to a letter that says we have, I agree to the memorandum of understanding without reading the memorandum.
Okay.
It's not going to happen.
It's four paragraphs. I could read it, but it doesn't matter.
Yes, Mr. Waldron?
We need to remember that the memorandum of understanding was approved by this council in 2016. And so it's not something that And so it's not something that we needed to read at that time. The council in twenty sixteen needed to read it at that time. Reading it now isn't gonna make a bit of difference. It exists, it was voted on.
And to that point, and you know that it was, Scott Hinton stood right there, did not provide us with it in advance and told us that we had to vote on it where the bridge was not going to be built. And that was an irresponsible act by him. And, and yes, we as a council, we should have pushed back. But we trusted him. And I, I think I've got it pulled up right here. And I'm not sure exactly where, where in this memorandum from then, can you tell me where it talks about the landscaping?
Sure, I can do that.
Well, I think that, I, I think I'd rather entertain a motion for the recess to read it, a short five-minute, ten-minute recess to read it. Um, I also wanna remind everyone that in our code, we don't engage in personalities. And, um, I think we should be careful about, uh, looking so far backward that we start, um, moving beyond the true context and, and get into negativities that aren't necessary at the time. The goal right now is to decide how to proceed forward. So I will entertain a motion for a recess if someone would like to do that.
Does that take a motion? I thought you could just recess us.
No, you, you need to.
My apologies, I make a motion to recess.
For a period of how long?
Until the council has had ample time to read. I, we can all look around and when we're all done.
Right, but we, we need to come back tonight because we have multiple other things to do. Yeah.
Yes, recess long enough for every council member to read it to their set of seconds.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
I see Mr. Moyer's hand, that's fine. So we have a motion, I'm sorry, we have a motion for recess to read the MOU. Sorry, Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Moyer.
And that includes the underlying, you know?
Yeah, not just the letter, but the MOU. We, we can drag that up pretty quickly, I think. Correct?
Yep, yes.
Um, I've got it.
All in favor, is there a discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Two, um, that was, six ayes, two nays.
Alderman Wadron and Alderman O'Brien, thank you.
All right, we're now on recess to read this. Uh, I would ask that you stay here while staff gets those documents for you. Please, Timian, have you finished? Mr. Wentz, do you need any more time? You're good, okay. I'll entertain a motion to come back in session.
Someone?
Oh, we need the clerk. I have one second. We're ready to come back.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
So was that a motion from Mr. O'Brien? And seconded by Alderman Schmidt?
I'm sorry, who's first, sorry about that.
Uh, Mr. Shoot, what did I just say? O'Brien, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are back in session. To your point? Okay. Um, any further discussion now that you've read it, Mr. Moyer?
Thank you. So my understanding is, is we approve this tonight, we can still, if, if we have plans, we can still negotiate with them. They may or may not agree, but we can still bring them forward.
That's how I understand it, yes, Ms. Christopoulos?
The other question would be whether we will or not, so.
All right. Yes, Mr. Wentz?
Uh, would it be okay if we pass this, that we, uh, add a note that says, uh, that we are discussing alternative uses for the space underneath? And, uh, please be informed that, um, we plan to revisit this issue to find a more, um, suitable, uh, solution that is good for both parties. Would that be something that we could add as a note to, uh, our response?
Well, then they won't have to agree to that, so we won't have to intervene this time.
So, so my question is, if we already have an agreement and it's already a done deal, then I, I, I guess, and I guess in your legal opinion, do you on a regular basis, if you've already got a deal that is signed, sealed, delivered, and there's no question about it, then come back and say, hey, um, let's reiterate what we've already have signed, sealed, and, and solved? As, as a matter of course, on a regular basis.
And it's really about what I dot does, not what I do. So I dot is asking for this again. It is a reiteration of what a previous council has agreed. Nothing Scott says going forward to change that. But if we alter this letter...
I, I don't think that's what Mr. Wentz was saying. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I think he was just saying, sign the letter, and then we have an attached letter of our own saying, we would like to talk to you about these plans because much time has passed and that would be led, you know, by Mr. Vitas' discussion, correct? Is that a hand raise? Am I understanding you correctly?
I appreciate that, Your Honor.
Is that all clear?
Much more eloquent than I.
Yes, Mr. Moyer?
And in addition, maybe our ULI, uh, plans and maybe some of our public comments, so that they can see that there's quite a bit of public support for doing something additionally.
It's, it's due time for that revisiting these plans and certainly a conversation continues, so.
Absolutely.
I, I would say, is, are you making a motion to write that letter?
Well, actually, I think...
Oh, I'm sorry, Bob.
I want, I want to actually install a rearview mirror there. Right off of a fifty-seven Chevy, so she can see me waving back there. You know, I, I just, just to create maybe a comfort level for council. Uh, and, and I understand the, the frustration, but, you know, where we are at with I dot, we have had ongoing conversations with them with respect to our ULI report. They're very well aware that that report is done. They're very well aware of the results. You know, Alex has made it known to Rebecca Marufo, you know, where we're at. I've made it clear to her. They made it clear to us that there was a, you know, a drop dead date to get the landscaping contracts out the door. I mean, they needed that, and that was about a month ago. They said, we have to have it, are we gonna do it or not? And it was like chain link fences. We had that whole discussion about the chain link fences, as you'll recall, versus decorative fences. And, um, so there's been dialogue. It's ongoing. And in the last correspondence, I think between I dot and, and Alex and myself, you know, they are aware of the skate park issue and the pump track. They're aware that we wanna have that dialogue, and they're open to have those discussions. And they're looking into it. You know, Alex shared very specific examples here in the Chicago area, as well in the state of Illinois, where they have actually allowed for skate parks underneath existing viaduct structures. So they know what we're looking for and they thanked us for it. So I think they're open to dialogue. You know, the only question is, is can we adaptively reuse whatever they put down there around that facility even? I mean, you know, it's, it's not mulch that's gonna rot, it's actually hardscape. So it's, it's decorative hardscape on top of it. So it could be used ultimately, you know? Not the big boulders, I call the moon rocks. I don't know what we would do with those yet, but, you know, we could.
So, so you're saying you won't follow through on that suggestion?
We have been following through. Believe me, we're not gonna let it pass away and die. We really are on top of this.
The reason I wanted as part of our resumetor or response was, I just don't want some bureaucrat that you haven't been in conversation with or there's some turnover with the people you have been in conversation. Because God knows we've run into that before where the, the person we've been working with was great. And then all of a sudden, we start sending them emails, and six months later, we realize they left and our emails have been gone into the void for the last six months. So that's where, so anybody who picks up this file knows this is our intention.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes and yes.
All right, any further questions? Thomas, is that a hand?
No.
No, okay. Um, so the motion to, to restate the motion, uh, what you're voting on is from, to allow me to sign this letter of understanding, send it back to I dot, and to be followed up by Mr. Vitas with further conversation on our plans. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Next, other?
Um, Mayor, the next item and Council, the next item that, that needs to be discussed, of course, is the roof on the Masalaum cell. Staff, Eric in particular, and Sarah from, uh, from Fleet and Facilities, reached out to eight different firms, I believe it was. Uh, two of them actually responded to the proposals. Uh, proposals were reviewed, uh, both by Sarah, Eric, as well as the, uh, our own building department in order to validate the proposals going forward. And Eric, if you wanna just present the proposals to council?
Yeah, um, so I reached out to five different companies and two down back to me. The lowest, most responsible was economy roofing at one hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred. And, uh, the second one came in for sterling roofing at a hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred. So staff was recommending, uh, pre-emergency repair, uh, count.
Move to approve.
Listen.
All right, motion by Alderman Wentz, seconded by Alderman Schmidt, discussion? Mr. Moyer?
How are we paying for this, again?
This was discussed during the last two budget meetings. Contingency.
Okay, just, you refresh it.
Yep, Mr. Schmidt?
Uh, and I, just as a refresher, I can't remember what we had estimated initially.
Hundred and sixty-four.
Oh, so that was our first guess, so we're coming in.
I had the first quote from Sterling, um, at that time.
Well, if we could take him in that direction every time, I'm gonna think.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Onto our work session. Uh, twenty twenty-two budget wrap-up, believe I turn it over to Mr. Vitas?
I would turn it over directly to Carol.
Ms. Farman, please, take us away.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. Well, I am very pleased to be here tonight on what could be our final budget work session for two thousand and twenty-two. According to my notes, um, we have two outstanding items to discuss tonight. And they are, and I kind of put it on a little agenda here and a fast-track things tonight. Number one, to establish the bonding level for the pool in combination with any drawdowns of reserves. And then two, to decide whether to reverse the RANs that have been issued for tip number seven that are currently paid, um, by Water and WPC and move them to advances paid from the general fund. And...
Yes, Mr. Wentz?
Uh, I, I guess it was my understanding that before we started talking about some of these capital, uh, projects that, uh, the council had made a vote, that we were gonna talk about prioritizations, um, of all of those things and then move into making these decisions. Because if, and I have a feeling that this is going to make the prioritization, but I thought that we had voted as a council to do that exercise. And the spirit of that was to go through everything, make a, uh, an educated prioritization, and then from there, make those final decisions on the budget.
Understood. However, uh, this particular item of the pool has already been on the cow and been voted on, uh, to, to, to move into our discussions. We, we voted, uh, I believe it was five to two?
Yeah, then, then, um, if, if you would have read the memo that was referenced in the motion that I had made, one of the, the, uh, issues on there was the pool. And so the idea was to have a discussion on all of the possible capital improvements throughout the city, prioritize them, make a decision on where we wanted to put our funds. And that included the pool. And like I said, I, I believe that it's going to wind up rising to the top, but I think that the exercise is the important thing because I think this will then determine maybe our decision on how much of the reserves we may want to use
I understand your point.
versus how much of the bonding we'd want to use.
I understand your point. This, this agenda, um, has been out since Friday, and there were, was a portion of questions on the agenda where the order could have been addressed. I think we owe it to our staff to explain the work she's done. And, um, after she explains that, if there's other motions the council would like to make related to anything, that's fine, but she has information to share with us.
I don't think this would prevent her from, from doing her work, but it would just be the order in which...
I'm not hearing a motion.
So I make a motion that we move the, uh, the discussion prioritization up, um, uh, to have that conversation first.
Is there a second?
I'm gonna take a vote, I'll second it.
All right, that's a motion, uh, by Alderman Wentz, seconded by Alderman Moyer to move the prioritization discussion ahead of the budget wrap-up. Yes, discussion?
The reason I think it's an important...
Yes. Sorry.
No problem. The reason I think it's important to have that discussion first, because I think that through the exercise, and I, I had handed this out as, as a way for us to go through, that we'd have discussion about different art funds that are available, uh, funds that are, uh, excess reserves, bonding, uh, funds. And I think we may wind up through that discussion having some clarity. It, it seems like a responsible thing to do as a, as a council, to talk about all of those things, not in a vacuum of one particular project, but through all the projects that we see. And there may be other projects that, that get brought up that have priority or, or that, uh, staff may recommend. And that may guide our decision, rather than making a, a decision in a vacuum that says, hey, we're going to do it this way, then have a holistic conversation and then find out later, oh, wait, I, maybe we, we would have wanted to use some of the, uh, excess reserves to reduce the rate on, on the fund because we have them available after we've had that conversation.
Okay, thank you for your perspective. Anyone else? All right, Mr. Schmidt?
I don't feel the need to continue having the conversation regarding the pool bonding and its basis. However, I, I think as we make a decision regarding the, um, the amount of money that we're taking from that additional available money, um, that feels like a much larger conversation. And while I, I, I don't want to slow things, I, I don't want, I don't feel the need to move those things out of that, out of place. But I'm not sure if I'd feel comfortable making the decision point at where we have labeled on as a decision point.
Well, you'll notice there's, uh, you can make motions at any time. We can go through both work sessions and then entertain motions to give directions to staff. That's, that could be a way to, uh, do it both ways. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor to switch the items order?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Uh, motion does not pass. Please continue.
So we talked about the first, um, couple of outstanding items. But before we go through that, I would like to just give a brief overview of everything that we've kind of talked about over the two work sessions. So again, that you have a feel for where the reserves are and hopefully you can make a good informed decision, um, moving forward on the twenty-two, uh, budget. So the first one is, is to take a look at the twenty twenty-one fund equity for final amendments. And I also handed out a, hand out some final fund equities that you can refer to. But as you all know, part of adopting the twenty-two budget is contingent on where we believe that we're gonna end the year in twenty twenty-one. So as we roll the projected reserves forward into twenty-two, we need to verify that the twenty-one amended budget is in the final form that the council wants it to be. So what I'd like you to do is to turn page ten, in the handout. And there you will see, those are the final amendments as codes on what we've been discussing here over the last, um, couple of work sessions. And you will see for twenty twenty-one, our total revenues are two hundred and fifty-three million, five hundred and nine thousand. Expenditures are a hundred and thirty-four million, fifty-seven thousand, for a net revenue over expenditures of a hundred and nineteen million, four hundred and fifty-two. As we take a look at the revenues, since we last amended the budget in August, the main changes are, revenues have gone up a hundred and seven million dollars. And that is because we are now talking about issuing ninety point six million dollars in PLB bonds, seven point one million dollars potential in the pool bonds. We are very fortunate to have reestimated some of our intergovernmental revenue as well as other city taxes. And we anticipate those increasing over two million dollars. And then as we move into the pension funds, um, we were very pleased that we are amending the interest earnings on the pension funds up over eight million dollars. up over eight million dollars between three's entire pension, um, because the end of the third quarter just for those um nine months actual, they've had over a fourteen percent return to bond, which is phenomenal. So we are amending that interest income up. So that is the major changes to our revenues. Feel really good about um the increased intergovernmental and city taxes. And on the expenditure side, since August, our expenditures are up one point three million dollars. And that is largely because of the ARPA funds um that the council allocated. We've got one million dollars that was allocated for water projects that have already been um completed this year. We have just um approved four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars payments for the tax layer out of the art funds. We had a hundred thousand for the Moline Community um Development Corp., seventy-five thousand for a new Moline. And then in addition to that, we have actually decreased some of our salaries for vacancies that we thought we were going to get filled here by the end of the year. And um offset by increases, we put some money in there for the six public works people, some contract help for snow um and lead. But again, so those salaries have been used to adjust accordingly with with open positions. And um, so that leaves us at one point three million dollars of an increase in expenditures. So that's the budget overall. If you turn back to page one.
I have a question, Carol, since you went over that.
Absolutely.
Didn't click with me. You mentioned that we spent a million dollars in water of ARP funds?
We transferred, if you recall, um, we have the ability for projects that have been spent from um, I think it's March twenty-sixth through the end of December. And we anticipated it to be one point three, but we transferred one million.
But we haven't actually, well, we spent those on just other projects during the year?
Yes.
Not new stuff. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So if we turn back to the first page, I would just like to give a quick snapshot here of the general fund. And the first thing I might say, the original budgets we adopted it, for those of you that were here when we adopted the budget, we had anticipated that we would be drawing down reserves two point seven million dollars because of our lost revenues. And now, I'm very, very happy to report, and you've heard us talking about this over the last few weeks. We anticipate we're actually going to end the year a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars to the bid. So it's an outstanding job, council, department heads, staff, citywide, um, you know, holding the line on budgets, but just beyond thankful that our revenues are coming back. If we take a look then down the row, um, we do anticipate to end the year with twenty-seven million, five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in general fund reserves. And out of that, we will be making advances to fund the TIPS for nine point nine million. We talked about restricting a million dollars for the pension obligation bonds, which leaves us at the sixteen point six million. And that is thirty-four percent um fund balance to expenditures a hundred and twenty-three days and four point, almost four, four and a half million dollars in reserves over our twenty-five percent level. So just very, very pleased to report on the twenty-one budget. Any questions on the twenty-one amended?
Very positive.
Thank you.
Okay.
But I'm sorry.
We do have one, Mr. Schmidt.
I'm making sure I formulated the full thought. Um. So that four point four million. I I guess I had thought that was the number that was lining up with the seven point one million that we had seen elsewhere. Is is that just we hadn't updated what was available or?
This is for the year twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
And if you remember, um, with the issuance of our pension obligation bonds starting in twenty-two, the total expenditures in the general fund, which is part of that equation for the calculation, it's going to drop just shy of six million dollars because we're now going to be levying in the debt service fund for unfunded liability instead of paying it out of the general funds of property tax.
Okay.
Um, levy. Does that make?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions on the, on the amended twenty-one budget? Not, please continue.
And are you looking for a motion to approve before moving on to twenty-two?
We were gonna, well, it wasn't a formal motion, but we were just gonna listen to all of their reports before we got to motions.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm gonna kind of speed release. Then moving on to the twenty-two um budget, um the fund deputies that are before you tonight do not include any drawdowns for pool and it excludes any transfer of the rams to the general fund. So it's, it's minus the two items on the top. And I just wanted to give you a snapshot of where we are.
So I'm sorry, Ms. Moyer, oh, you're just about to tell us.
Yep, which page? Let me get you the page number here. So if you turn to page twenty. Yep, we're starting the new year with the total. And the balances before you. This is how I've got my page. And the balances before you, they include all of the changes that we talked about during the last two budget work sessions. And if you take a look down that final row of total funds, we've got a hundred and forty-nine million dollars in revenues versus a hundred and forty-three million dollars in expenditures for revenues over expenditures in excess of six million dollars. And if you kind of begin, just kind of do a quick recap on the budget. The budget as presented maintains healthy fund balances and cash reserves in most every fund throughout of, out of our sixty-three budgeted funds. It aligns with council's strategic plan and our three pillars. It establishes the property tax levy at the fifteen million, nine fifty-three, eight forty-two. It has no increase in utility fees for two thousand and twenty-two. It does fund seven new positions in economic development and water and WPC. And it includes over ten million dollars in ARPA funds that include infrastructure, water and sewer projects, and various economy improvements. It also funds one million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for the strategic plan, various projects across the board and across all funds. If you then move back to page eleven, we're gonna take that snapshot of the general fund. And if you just take a look below the blue line, you will see the budget as presented does draw down reserves three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. And I would like to say that that is largely for one-time drawdowns on the strategic plan. We just said across the board, there was one million, two fifty-two. A very significant amount of that is in the general fund. Um, so we have an ending fund balance of twenty-seven million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand. And again, we are supporting the TIPS out of the general fund to the tune of eight point seven million dollars. Again, we've got that million dollars restricted for the POV bonds, brings us down to seventeen million, five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. That number as a percentage of the reduced expenditures now actually calculates to forty-two point three-five percent. And a hundred and fifty-two days with excess reserves over our twenty-five percent policy of seven million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. So that's our governmental funds largely. And then if we move to page twenty-two, we take a real quick snapshot of the enterprise fund. And the first one there on page twenty-two, that is our water fund. And as you know, after we went back and we calculated, or or we made an adjustment for vacant positions, at a conservative amount of eight point five percent versus the twenty percent open positions we have right now. It did make that cash flow look much better as we look out for five years. So this does not include moving the rams out of the TIPS. So water right now is paying over eight hundred thousand supporting tip number seven. The cash and investments at the end of twenty twenty-two is anticipated to be slightly below twenty percent, which is slightly below what our fund policy, fund balance policy is. However, our policy is written so that we have the opportunity of there, you know, our certain drawdowns or knowing the future that we're building those back up. And we're going to be talking to movies about that as well. We will have very good cash flow as we see our debt service dropping off on those pink highlighted bars there to the tune of we're going to get to about forty-eight percent um in year twenty twenty-six. And this does not include any increase in user fees. Um, the only thing will be for council's consideration is what fee level at some point you want it to be to drive the um all projects with the council um to be considering in the next few years. The water is in very good shape. If we turn the page then to page twenty-four, the same thing with WPC, we adjusted for those vacancies and our cash flow. If you look at two thousand and twenty-two, it does go from a hundred and two percent, it drops down to about forty, a little below forty percent in twenty-six. But we have almost four point four million dollars of very significant projects coming out of it for the design for South Slope and Dewatering. And the other enterprise funds are are in good shape. As you know, we're transferring with a loan two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into sanitation. So that is made whole here for the upcoming budget, and we'll be talking about that more. Staff will come back with some recommendations. And so then lastly is our internal service funds. They start on page twenty-nine. And everything that is under that exception is all within our fund balance policy. As far as reserves are, they are either at or exceed those fund balances. So with that, if there's no questions on those actual statements, if we'd like to turn to the second page attached to the agenda. Council had asked that I come back with some various scenarios. And again, we could have a hundred scenarios of different various bonding models. But it's a snapshot, you know, potential savings to be. And the bottom line is, is interest rates are still very favorable. Um, borrowings is very affordable. And it really comes down to what council's plans are to use excess reserves for. So the first scenario is the one that we presented during the budget, and that was a hundred percent bonding for the pool at seven point one million dollars. Um, I talked with Spear and they did refresh the interest rates. They ticked up just a little bit for the pool as well as the pension obligation bond. Not a lot. We're currently looking at two point five two percent and we were at two point four six. So it's not a lot, um, but it has made a difference. The total net cost is two million dollars, a little over two million dollars in financing. This one does not draw down anything out of the general fund. And again, it leaves those reserves in the general fund at the seven point one level for the excess over the twenty-five percent. The next scenario is to leave the twenty-year term, but downsizing the bond issuance to the six point one million again, taking one million out of the general fund reserves. It does decrease our P and I payments, down about sixty-four um thousand dollars annually. The all-inclusive cost is the same at the two point five two because it's twenty years. The net cost is about two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars less. And again, there's interest savings, but you're also putting in a million dollars of reserves to get that savings. Again, on the impact on the general fund, it's a million dollar drawdown. And the available reserves then um in the general fund are reduced to the six million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand. The third scenario, this was the one the mayor had requested during our first uh work session. And that was to consider um a million dollars drawdown of reserves and to try to shorten the term. And so this one shortens the term to seventeen years. Our P and I principal and interest payments are about twenty thousand less than that first scenario. So four hundred and thirty-six thousand a year. The all-inclusive cost of interest is dropped to two point three one percent for the seventeen years. Total net cost, one point three million. And again, our reserves stay at about six point one million dollars over the twenty-five percent. And then lastly, if we were to basically bond for half of it, we'd have to um put forward three and a half million dollars of the general fund reserves. The total net cost is only six hundred and sixty-eight thousand. But again, you're putting in three and a half million of reserves to get a savings, and I'm not downplaying it. If there's cash reserves that you do not need, that is a very wise decision. And then that would save you a little over a million three. But it would leave our, our net reserves at three point six million dollars in the general fund over the twenty-five percent.
And if you pay it off five years earlier.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. It's fifteen years. Yes. Yeah, I mean, it truly is. That's, I mean, financially, if you, that would be the wise decision.
Mr. Wentz.
Yeah, a- and and that option would also, the uh P and I is only two hundred and eighty-four thousand, which would leave quite an uh amount of additional debt service that we had been using otherwise to use for other bonding. Or in the, in the alternative, while we're making those decisions, those would go to better streets.
Yes.
Because that would be in the CIP. And so I think that there's some real um uh value in that, that approach.
Thank you.
Any questions on the, the various bonding scenarios?
No, please continue.
The next item, um, again, we talked, potentially um considering reversing the rams for tip number seven out of water and WPC in this kind of thing to be, and we looked at the cash flows to begin with, and the cash flows were getting a little on the low side. And the first scenario there is the current status as presented has no changes, no changes. So in twenty-two, for the water fund, our percentage of cash flow to expenditures is just under the twenty percent, like we said a little bit ago. Cash is one million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, and then that grows to about forty-eight percent in five years and to three point two million. And that's largely because we've got debt dropping off in twenty-four. And it still is um solid projects on an annual basis um in comparison to what we've done in previous years. On the WPC side, again, we're at a hundred and two. We just went through this. Um, with the four point two million dollars for South Slope and the Dewatering. Again, um, reserves are reduced to just shy of forty percent to twenty-six and a little of, in excess of three million dollars. The general fund net reserves um currently are seventeen million, five hundred and twelve thousand. The impact that this would have um is that the, the net reserves are still at seven million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand because we're not changing anything. Okay, so status quo. If we were to reverse the rams and we do cash advances from the general fund instead, it would put eight hundred and two thousand dollars back into the water fund. And you can see by twenty-six, that brings it up to sixty percent, thirty-two percent during the current year coming up in twenty-two. And for water, um, just shy of a million dollars would go back into the water fund. Um, their cash reserves, a hundred and sixteen percent, and then fifty-two percent in twenty-six. The drawdown on the reserves um would bring that down to five point three million dollars and it's a drawdown of about one point eight million dollars. So those, in summary, that's the two kind of outstanding issues that the council was talking about. Consideration for using some of those excess general fund.
Mr. Walden.
Carol, going, let's say we went with the paying back the uh water and sewer funds. Going forward, that would be on the general fund until there was some development out there. What would be the impact going forward yearly on the general fund if no development takes place out there?
This additional amount would pretty much stay um because there's just not any impact. So when we looked at the general fund for twenty-two, it was like eight point eight million dollars of advances. Just one second, I want to find it. If I got the right page. Yes.
And the reason I'm asking is that WPC and water have been paying, paying for that every year.
Yes.
So if we pay back, or the two years, we pay them back and get them out of the scenario, going forward, it's going to be on the general fund's back. How much is that going to be annually?
The total amount is eight point six million plus one point seven. So it's gonna be about ten point three million dollars. And it's gonna kind of teeter up and down because some of the tips pay off. And it's going to kind of teeter up and down because some of the tips pay off if it comes down. And then some of this kind of back up. It just depends because there's a lot more tips than just tip seven at all.
Are you just asking for the debt service moving forward? I think he's just asking for what is the debt service on tip eleven that the general fund is going to be responsible for moving forward.
On tip eleven or tip seven?
On tip seven.
Seven.
Oh, the annual debt service is just shy of seven hundred thousand dollars.
That's what I was saying. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Uh, what, Mr. Went, and then I think it's on Mr. Schmidt's hand as well.
I just, for for some clarification, because I was the one that originally had talked about, because I think the the original thing that you guys had presented was the payback to the the uh uh WPC and water was further down the road. Um, I was the one at the time that had suggested, well, let's look at paying this back earlier because at that time, we were being told that the cash reserves and the cash uh on hand for water and WPC was dipping down below our policy and everything. We now know that's uh not the case, that um other than one year where WPC drops to nineteen percent and then goes back up considerably uh that we're not in that dire situation that we had thought and what precipitated me asking this. So I don't think that there's even a reason to to look at this. It should be something that we we deal with down the road.
Your honor, I have a follow-up to that that's in relation to that.
Mr. Walden.
These loans from water and sewer the last two years, are they making any interest on their loan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's important. That makes more sense for what you're proposing.
Mr. Schmidt.
And I I think all that makes sense. My only question, I guess, is if we move this away from water and WPC, and this is a past question for Tony, um, what do I get from that? What do we get from that? I mean, would it just be sitting in reserve or is there, is there a reason why we should move toward that? I guess is what I'm asking.
You'd be getting staple rates and you would not have to think about rates when it comes to lead water service replacements. It's going to be fifty million dollars over the next twenty years and uh another forty to fifty million dollars for renovations of the south coast.
And just to clarify, that was if we do move it, correct? That's scenario two.
Well, and.
That's what you get for scenario two is what you're saying.
Right.
Got it.
And and we're paying for that one way or another, just whether we're doing it now versus later, right? Is that?
It helps the cash flow right now, but if you're talking fifty million dollars at some point, that's kind of you'll have, that'll have to be addressed at some point down the road.
Got it. Mr. Went.
Yeah, I I mean, ultimately, the fifty million dollars of lead services or the the South Slope, this is a drop in the bucket. I mean, it won't stave off those issues. And so I I understand where where they're coming from. But I think you were maybe asking for, is there something that this would then allow them to do that they wouldn't otherwise be able to do? I think that we've we've seen that the cash flow seems to be good at least through twenty twenty-six. Um, and so even the discussions of of rate increases or whatever, they may be tied to a super large capital project, which we'll have to deal with when that comes along. But um I don't think that we're in a position that we maybe thought we were on the first presentation where those cash reserves were dipping or or falling. So that's that's my opinion.
And weren't we also, your honor?
Mm-hmm.
Weren't we also going to look at rates um as far as expanding our customer base and the rates that the the new customers will be paying or what they're currently paying?
Yeah, and we made that motion.
I think we're going to look at that at some point.
The staff will be coming back during twenty twenty-two.
Sure.
That's your full report?
And so with that, if you, I'm happy to answer any other questions you have regarding the twenty-one and twenty-two.
I wonder if we might uh move to the next item on the work session and then uh when we're entertaining motions, that those questions can be asked of you. All right, so I will turn things over to you, Mr. Vepas.
Sure.
Project prioritization and funding allocation discussion.
All right, let me just get my notes out. Okay, um, everybody should have copies of multiple documents, starting with Alderman Went's document or documents, uh, the cover memo you received from Alderman Went in October of twenty-one and the twenty-second. Um, and then tonight, I believe you also have received a handout that basically talks about options A, B, and C with additional art funds. And then if you flip the page, you can see the allocation of total funds to the following projects uh with columns identifying not only the project and uh and the estimated project cost. And I will say estimated because all things are estimated until they're costed out. Uh, and then whether it would be bonded, project would be bonded, would come from excess reserves or art funds or grants. We, you know, we also have the opportunity to get grants. So there's a lot of different ways to skin this cat. Um, I I guess in in going through it, I did take the list that the Aldermen sent to us. And then I had Macy uh last week work with me to move those projects because they weren't, all of them weren't originally uh presented as a part of the strategic plan or made it into the strategic plan or made it into the art allocations or otherwise into the twenty-two budget. So we moved those projects into the three columns of infrastructure, quality of place, and the economy. And you can see that we're infrastructure heavy. And and that's good because infrastructure is what the citizens were really asking for. They really want infrastructure. Uh, you can see quality of place projects and, you know, the pool falls into that core category. It is really infrastructure, but it does create a quality of place. So what I did is I moved it that there along with, you know, the riverfront park, the signature riverfront park, which has yet to be designed, developed, or or even refined. But it belongs in that location along with the skate and the pump track, uh, the Kiwanis Trail Improvement, which I'm not familiar with, uh, library property development, which of course is is already there. Three hundred thousand is set aside for that in a subsequent year. And then the East End Park update, of course, I am aware of that along the Illinois ninety-two corridor. Um, and then you move into economy and of course, economy is is really, uh, it's how we make our money. It's how we make our money. Here, we're spending on the left and on the right is how we make it. So, you know, we have things like the I seventy-four acquisition and beautification. So that development happens there at the corridor. Uh, there's the South Paul Mar, uh, South Park Mall Sports Complex and Midland Davis relocation. Uh, but that's pretty much what came off of the list. So we refined it even further. And this was um the next list I gave you. And that page, basically, I broke it down, all of those projects. Then I broke them down categorically into roads, bridges, and parking. Parking referring to structures. Water production and distribution, uh, storm sewer collection and drainage ways, um, wastewater treatment, sanitary sewer collection, uh, economic development, parks and recreation, and library. So pretty much the major categories that that we've been, you know, as a city would normally be funding. So you can start to see a dispersion happening. And I and I and I think it's important to note that, you know, some of them, I don't have numbers down in there. Some of these, I don't even know what they are, to be honest with you, because I've only been here for three months. But obviously, when they come to you on a list from an Alderman who's been sitting here since two thousand and fifteen, they have been discussed and they've gone nowhere. They, nothing's happened with them. And uh I would add to that, uh, the Alderman and I had a great conversation Friday. Uh, I think I know where he's going. I think I know where the city needs to go in in terms of its long-range financial planning. And that includes in particular all of our capital improvement, planning, and budgeting across the boards. Categorically, all of these items. And not only all of these, but beyond this list, I would bet if we brainstormed on a Saturday, this list would grow magnanimously. So that's a discussion for for twenty twenty-two. And I really want to bring that forward in terms of how do we do long-term financial planning for the city, not just looking at fiscal twenty-two, not just looking at twenty-three, but taking a real hard look at infrastructure and looking at and and what we need to invest over the next twenty years based upon, you know, the pavement analysis that needs to be done. In other cities that I've managed, we do that. You do the pavement analysis. You come back with a very clean underst, clear understanding of what needs to be done, when it needs to be done, what it's going to cost, and then the projected cost in the in the outer years based upon using, you know, the CPI as an indicator, a historical indicator or other analytics that we can use to actually divulge those numbers. But we need to do that not only with roads, we need to do that with our water system, right? We need to do that with our sanitary sewer system. We need to do that with our water production. We need to do that with our wastewater treatment. I mean, in in cities of this size, those types of management tools are the guiding tools that allow this council to know that when we sit down at budget time, you have in front of you the annual element for each and every one of those particular categories. So your decision-making is when it's simplified. The numbers are brought up to date based upon where we're at and and real-time estimates that are are collected or performed by staff. So that's kind of the precursor to to what we're looking at. I I think that a lot of the projects in here, some of you will know, some of you may not. Um, but, you know, they're here to be discussed. How we will fund them, you know, going forward is really is really the debate. You obviously have healthy reserves, you obviously have debt capacity. Um, you have the ability to pay, which is actually a blessing in disguise because a lot of cities have those tools. They don't have the ability to pay and they struggle to find, non-home rule cities in particular, struggle to find ways to pay for all this. You have the ability to do it. You just need the tools to make it more simplistic for not only yourselves but staff, but for your citizens to understand. I mean, I have passed referendums to raise utility taxes in cities based on plans like the ones I'm describing to you. Because if you live on Twenty-Sixth Street or Forty-Eighth Avenue, you can know exactly when your road is going to be done or the water in the sewer or the red pipes or the lead pipes. You know when everything is coming. It's all laid out in a in a in a in a comprehensive way with a comprehensive plan. And um I think that is really where where I see us, you know, having had long conversations with some of you and maybe not with all of you. Things are hectic here. But I see that as as really kind of the longer-term answer for Moline to step ahead of itself and ahead of everyone around us in terms of our ability to plan effectively and most importantly, plan our finances because you have great finances and we want to protect them, recognizing, of course, that, you know, you have enterprise funds and utilities and, you know, they are depreciating assets. And as they depreciate, you need to pump money back in if you want to keep the enterprise healthy. Otherwise, it doesn't look so good on the books and Carol can verify that's part of what the Caffer does. You know, there was a Gatsby requirement years ago, you know, is to manage our assets properly and reinvest. So as they come off the books, you're putting money back in. So that's what the RAN discussion is all about, to be honest with you. It's putting money back out there and protecting your rates. So anyhow, that being said, um, any questions on on that so far? No? No? That's good. Wow, I finally, finally got a winner. So anyhow, I I guess as we go through these, um, you know, the arsenal, I can go through them one by one if you want or I can let Alderman Went entertain some discussions since, you know, he's got his hand up.
Yeah, if if you don't mind. Um, I I thought that, because this is, this is a a very important discussion. And in normal times, we would probably have an entire Saturday afternoon to talk about uh the these sorts of things. And and maybe that's where we eventually get to and and we need to, I think, moving forward. Um, because I think, again, talking about one versus another, I don't think this council, we've made decisions on what kind of pool of money that we're we're talking about. I don't think that we've got a full scope understanding of what we're ready to spend or or do. And so on the thing that I had handed out is, you can kind of see that the first part here is um making a a decision point on uh our reserves. We've, uh, under our policy, we have the ability to um have somewhere between twenty and twenty-five percent. Obviously, if we're over that, we're actually technically outside of our policy and we're probably hoarding more money than we probably should. But um and with that, and and I apologize because I think that uh this is a somewhat moving target as you get, as you guys have uh have uh polished the numbers. I think the last one you could give me was seven point two million was the excess. And I know in previous conversations, I was talking about six point seven million. We're even in better shape than we had thought. Uh, but it's actually, I think, seven point, it was seven million one hundred and seventy-four thousand, right?
Yeah.
So uh that actually needs to be updated. I think that was just uh um done in this last um point here. Um, so a a conversation of, do we want to, if we're going to be going through these projects, have in our pool, it doesn't mean that we're going to spend it all, but as a policy, do we want to just kind of come down to twenty-five percent and be willing to kind of play with that money? Or do we want to, hey, we've got so many things we want to get out there. We we feel comfortable bringing it down to twenty percent, which is closer to this nine point three million or somewhere in between or less than or or whatever.
Mr. Schmidt.
My my thought would be twenty-five percent as a target on the year. Um, that gives us room so that if there is a emergent need, um, that gives us room to work with. Now, if we made a decision and we went under to twenty-four or twenty, I mean, I think that's something, but I think a target should be to get back within the policy range overall. Um, it makes sense to me.
Mr. Walden.
One issue for me is uh going back to the pool bond and taking money out of the general reserves. I think that decision needs to be, if we're going to take place, that decision needs to take place because then that formulates what how much reserves we have left. So trying to speed the process along a little bit, I'd like to make a motion, reference the pool bond uh that we go with uh what Carol offered as number four. Three point six million bonding plus three point five million general refund reserves. Uh, term of fifteen years, total net cost of six hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Walden, second by Alderman O'Brien. Discussion? Mr. Went.
Yeah, I I I will talk in favor of this. I I was kind of hoping that we kind of worked through this this process a a little bit. But if if that's where we're at.
That process dictates the next one, I think, what you want to leave is your reserves.
Well, yeah, but but if you were talking about everything that we've got out there, you would just, on the next page, you would put three point five million.
The comments have to be related to the motion.
No.
You're talking process.
Okay, thank you, your honor. But if you're if you're going through that, then you would be on the second page. You, that's how much you would allocate there. And then you have the remaining three point four or whatever that you could use in other places or or whatever. Um, but since it's on the floor, um, I I agree with you. So what this does is um the park board's portion of debt service had historically been about a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. This doubles it up to about two hundred and eighty-eight of of that debt service, which I don't have any problem with at all. And I think that by doing it this way, um, it it gives that portion of the debt service over to the parks. But it shrinks this down to a fifteen-year amortization. The savings are immense. The um, the interest rate is even better. And I think that it is a a a good, reasonable approach uh moving forward with with this. So I wholeheartedly agree with uh option number four.
Any other comments related to number four in terms of the bonding level for the pool? Questions of our staff? It's set aside before a question, Mr. Schmidt. You do sit next to me, so. All right, I'm not hearing any questions. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes.
All right, so with that being said, now we know that there's three point five million that has been taken out of that reserve. So you can subtract that from the seven point one. And I'm assuming maybe Carol's got a calculator that can do this faster than I can do it in my head. Um, but we're probably looking at, uh, what, the three point six? Um, but we're probably looking at, uh, what, the three point six?
In that range, yep.
Yeah, so, so i- if, if the intent is to go to twenty-five percent, which, um, I, I want to hear from everybody, that's the idea, then what we would put in, um, uh, would be, for the reserves, we've got three point six million dollars that we could then utilize on the second page. And so, before we make that, let me kind of walk through the next, next couple. So, uh, the next section B was with the idea that we have a bonding power right now, depending on interest rates, that'll be somewhere between nineteen and twenty-three million, I think, Carol is kind of what the, the range was.
Yes.
With the debt service that is coming off in twenty-twenty-three. And so, uh, the discussion then becomes, is, is our intent to follow the amount of debt service that we have had historically? Now with this vote, uh, we do know that, uh, um, about three point six million dollars of that, uh, twenty-one million bucks, uh, we've, uh, allocated to the, to the pool. Uh, so, uh, now we're looking at, you know, seventeen million dollars worth of bonding power. If we, as a council, decide, okay, yes, we, we want that much money to quote-unquote "play with" for the, uh, the other projects, we would make that decision. Maybe we say, hey, maybe we want to do less, because remember, all money that we don't spend towards debt service goes towards improving our roads, which we've all talked about is a huge priority for us, and we've heard that at every listing post and, and from our residents.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Is that truly the case, that all money would go toward roads, or would we not have the power to say, we want to put this in economic development, or some other of our categories? Mr. Vitas, or Mr. Wilder?
It has to be used for CIP. And historically, that's always been streets. The, the ordinance says sixty percent of that home rule, uh, tax will go towards capital improvements. Historically, that's always been roads, unless you used it as a debt service.
That is correct, because I know it did go in place for, um, the police station and things like that.
Yeah, yeah. So if we were building something and went to a bonding of debt service for a capital improvement.
Thank you.
Now, we can change the ordinance and sweeten the stuff and use it for whatever we want it, but that's a whole different conversation. So, the idea would be, you, we would then come up with how much monopoly mon- or how much money do, we're talking about real money here, uh, do we have to play with? Now, I, I, and so that would be the number you would put in here, total funds available from A and B. Now underneath here, I just, as a reminder, for some of the things that we have on the next page, uh, we have, uh, allocated certain ARP funds for. Um, some of them have been actually allocated for specific projects, and others could be available for other projects. And so if you go to the second page, the idea is, so let's say we had a number of twenty million dollars from A and B on the front page. Then what you could do is you could then allocate those to whichever projects you want. And the idea would be, we would all do this. You would take your money and, you know, you basically put your money where your, uh, priorities are, and we would, uh, then add those up, um, and determine, okay, which things got money and which things didn't, and then maybe have, in, in most areas, when they do this, you, you might have multiple rounds. So all the stuff, stuff that either didn't get, uh, allocated to, or got very minimal allocation, would kind of drop off, and it would then start to shrink the list to, to what our priority is. And then we would kind of get to that num- or those things that we want to spend that twenty million dollars towards. Now, it doesn't mean that we're doing that right now, but it, it gives us those priorities so we're, like, as we're moving forward, saying, hey, we, we've made decisions that this is not a priority for this. If we're, if we're going to do this, we've got to find other, uh, financing sources for it. And you can see down here, there's some empty boxes. I didn't pretend that I've got every single thing under the sun that we could do. Uh, I took this from, uh, Alex's memo about things downtown and, and things, uh, revolving around the bridge and, and other economic developments downtown. I took it from, uh, memos that staff had provided for their request for ARP funding on, on different things, and then a number of other things. I, I didn't put anything on here, except for the Kiwanis Trail, which had been presented, uh, uh, at one point, um, which would be eligible for ARP funds or, um, or, or these things. Anything that was under a million dollars, because most of those things could be absorbed within any given budget year. The, the reason I did, uh, Kiwanis also is because that would basically, for the Parks Department, take all of their CIP for one particular year if they were going to do it. And I, I, I thought that that was substantial enough that it should probably be part of this discussion. So, um, if everybody's okay with that, I think that maybe kind of doing that exercise on the first page, um, I know that, uh, Alderman Schmidt had, um, had said something about the, keeping it at twenty-five percent, and maybe if we can get consensus, if that's what we want to do, then that would be, what, thirty-six million dollars remaining, because we've already spent, spent, uh, three point five of it for the, the pool motion.
Yeah. Just a question.
Yes.
Just a question for clarification. Um, like going through the exercises, exercise, uh, tonight or whenever, I mean, are you proposing to take any of the, other than this pool vote, or the other res- uh, the other motions that, that Carol needs? Are you suggesting that any of these items down below, coming out of the excess reserve, which, you know, we just drew down by three point five million, that those projects would then go into the twenty-two budget, or the twenty-three budget, or the twenty-four, because we have an aggressive budget for twenty-two, and I doubt we'll even get those projects done?
So, so.
I'm concerned about the management capacity to do the work.
I think what we would do is, we would say, hey, these are our priorities, and then staff would come back to us and say, this is doable now, this is not doable till twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, whatever that, that case is. And then from there, we, we'd make our decisions. And quite honestly, the numbers we've got next to it, have, some of them are recent numbers from, you know, recent memos, some of them, like the, like the Arsenal Bridge Deck for, i- is, is an example. I think that six million dollar number was from two or three years ago. Um, and that's a decision point that either we have to come up with six million dollars to do this, or we have to take this thing down. I mean, there's, you know, I mean, now, there could be possibility of grant funding and, and, and those sort of things, and.
Potentially, yes. Funds through the federal government in cooperation with the, uh, with the garrison commander, the colonel, and those discussions are happening.
Right.
In terms of seeking grant funds to work with the community, but there's, there's a big infancy, those discussions.
And, and two years ago, we had that discussion, we had asked staff to, to start that, because, you know, it's for their benefit and, and, and those sorts of things. But those are the types of things, I mean, if, if this council made it a priority that said, hey, yes, we want to spend six million dollars on this, well, that makes that, those discussions a whole lot easier. If we're saying, hey, we're not ready to blow, you know, a third of, uh, the money we've got available on that bridge deck, then you can go back to the garrison and say, hey, we, we don't have the funds for this, so you better help us find some grant money, or this isn't going to happen.
Mr. Wilder, Alderman. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. What, would the cause of action would be to set some money aside? I, I mean, if the Arsenal Bridge, I mean, we had a, uh, an incident where the chunks of the concrete are actually falling off the building, so we're going to have to address it sooner than later.
Yeah.
Uh, and if the Arsenal is not willing to, I mean, you know, it's the federal government, who knows? They could, they could say, yeah, we'll, we'll pitch in and we'll do half, that'd be great. If we'll do it all, that'd be even better. But do we need to, I, and, and maybe don't do this tonight, but do we need to put that money aside for the deck? Uh, and have it in reserve, something in reserve? Because it is, i- it's, it's not something we can put off. I mean, it doesn't seem like it is. And I don't go to the Arsenal very much, I don't drive on it, but it sounds like it's, it's really falling apart.
Mr. Smith?
Well, what happened two years? You, you mentioned two years ago, that it came up, what happened then?
So, a- at that time, there was some discussion of using all our rebuild, this was before ARP and before whatever. So, there were some funds coming in with Rebuild Illinois, coming in from the increase of the gas tax from nineteen cents to thirty-eight cents. And there was a proposal for, I think we were going to pay maybe sixty percent of it, and the Arsenal was maybe going to pay forty percent, if they could get a certain grant. But we would basically take all of our money that we were getting from the state over the next however many years, and we'd have to dedicate it, I was thinking it was like three or four years of it, uh, that, because it was, I don't know, like, four million dollars worth, that we were going to have to dedicate it towards the Arsenal. And we wouldn't do any of the other projects that needed to be done around town. And at the time, the council said, go back to the Arsenal and find a better solution. Uh, because the alternative at that point that was, uh, presented to us was that for a million dollars, we could just take it down. And there are some other economic development benefits. If you take that down, then the historic block into the collector's center, all of a sudden opens up, you've got back, uh, on Fourth Avenue, uh, back behind Beerstube and all that, that on-ramp, uh, drops. I mean, there become some additional economic development opportunities. So that was part of the discussion, that if we can get them to, to pay for all of it and make them happy, that's one thing. But if we can't, reducing our liability to a million dollars and then have ex- other economic development possibilities, isn't a terrible, uh, second option. And so, um, and then that spurred another conversation, I think I maybe had put this on here, that, well, if we drop this, what happens if there is some kind of emergency on the other side of the tracks? A railroad derailment, and you need to get emergency vehicles to the other side? Do you have to go all the way down to Mount Island or East Moline? And one of the discussions, and that's why I've got it, that you could, for maybe a million and a half, put a one-lane, it'd be used for pedestrians and bicycles to go over on regular times, but if you needed to get an ambulance, sort of like what, how we designed the Sylvan Island Bridge. It can, and the way it was designed, an ambulance can go over it, in case of an emergency. And so the idea would be, well, that could be an option, that's still two point five million, but that's a whole lot further away from, you know, six million dollars, and you wind up with a pedestrian bicycle bridge. And so those are the kinds of discussions that this gets into all sorts of minutia, but we only have so many funds, and so we've got to make some of those decisions.
And now we're looking at about six million? And it could have been cheaper, maybe, back then?
Well, I, I, I think that that grant that was talked about with, with the feds, my guess is, we could probably find, especially with the, when the infrastructure bill comes through, and what's happened in Washington, there's going to be some grants available, but we can't guarantee those. And so the, the idea here is that if something is, is that important, that you'd set it aside, six million dollars, and then if we get a grant, then all of a sudden, we've got, you know, an extra three million dollars that we can then spend on something else. Because we get a grant, because we don't have the grant, we know, know if we will get the grant, but that would be the, the, the premise. Because I think a lot of these things, I mean, even the Ko- the Kiwanis Trail, I think the idea was, would be allocate a half a million towards it, but we definitely direct staff to find some grants and everything, and if they find, you know, a fifty-fifty grant or an eighty-twenty grant, then that money comes back and then we can use it on other things.
Mr. Wilder?
Again, it's a question of time. I mean, the timing of it, and how bad the, the bridge deck is in shape. Now, did you say in your comments that the Arsenal, that the federal government okayed us taking down that bridge if we need to?
It is ours from the off-ramps back, so we have the authority.
So we can take it down.
What?
We can take it down.
That's what we were told by him.
I would like to make a quick point here, is that Bob has made a comment about capacity to do certain projects. And the staff has already gone through, uh, the vetting of the projects that were on their wish lists, or on, you know, whether it was the ARP dollars or whatever, they've already pushed forward projects they thought they could get to, that, that's why we saw them in the budget. I would be hesitant to move too far on something with actual dollar amounts attached, because we don't have those recommendations from staff yet. I understand what you're saying about, um, how do we, finding out from the, the council where their priorities are. I personally think the priorities are leaping off the page for me, because of what we know from the community. The commu- I, and, and, and my belief is, we must weigh the community's, um, input with our own council input, to find a collaborative prioritization, not just our council prioritization. And so for me, it's jumping off the page that anything that's in the green is of, of the highest priority on, on Bob's sheet. And then trusting his, uh, his process here that he shared with us in the strategic plan, many of these items should be coming back for discussion, based on his telling us that we need to have an overall plan. But that's just perspective. I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't do what the process has here explaining it. I'm, I'm thinking some of pieces of it are, are for me, jumping off the page. I don't know where other council members are at. Is that a hand, Mr. Schmidt?
I think that one of the pieces missing from trying to set money into these projects is the timing aspect. And there's, there's the staff capacity question, but there's also the, when will this actually be ready question? Um, and I know we've talked about, you know, I think setting a priority of these are the things we want to see where we want to be, but that list won't necessarily be able to happen in sequential order, just by being most important. And I think that, um, you, and, and I hesitate even to go through a process where we apply money to how much value is something, because some of these things cost less, so just because it has less money, doesn't mean it's less, actually less important. And, um, I think, I, it's, it's a struggle to understand those two things, and to look at what's most important versus what's going to add the most cost to it.
Mr. White?
And I don't disagree with you. It, the idea is that, you know, like, what the mayor said, you know, there's things on the green that are jumping out. I completely agree, but that's not direction to staff. I mean, I mean, which one of those things is, are the most important? Which one of those things do, should they be prioritizing to try to get done, maybe in twenty-twenty-three versus twenty-twenty-six, or, or, or those sorts of things? And that's, we've got to make those hard decisions. I mean, it's not easy, it, I mean, it is very difficult, and there will be some things where we like, hey, this is a priority for ours? And staff's going to come back and say, it can be a priority for you, but we don't have the bandwidth, and we've got to go through X, Y, and Z, and it won't be till twenty-twenty-eight that, that, that gets done. And, but, but then we've, we've, we've given them what our priority is, they've come back and give us their answer of what the practicality is, and then at that point, we go, well, if it's twenty-twenty-eight, let's use that money now, but keep working on it, and we'll find or set aside funds, because we've got other debt service that's coming off in, uh, twenty-thirty, and so maybe that's when we'll, we'll do it. And so, I, I think that that is, and, and the toughest thing, and this is the thing that most elected officials don't want to do, by choosing some things, there's some things that you're not choosing. And nobody wants to be on record of like, well, I didn't prioritize that thing, but that's the tough thing we've got to do. And I agree with you, that, that the numbers are kind of what we said, that the six million dollars, maybe eight million dollars now, I don't know if we've gotten in the last two years an update on what it's actually going to cost, um, for, for that particular thing, there may be some that are less expensive, some that are more expensive, but it gives an I, a rough idea. I don't think that the idea is like, if we put down two point one million dollars to towards this, we haven't made a budget amendment that that's what we're going to spend, but it does tell staff, this is a priority for us.
So, I, I, again, I really do hear what you're saying, Mr. White. I, I have a perspective difference in terms of collaboration, because I hear you saying, I want to tell staff all these things. I'm saying, I want us to work with staff and what they're telling us about what needs to get done, when. And, and I think that's just a difference of, of approach. Um, I don't know where the rest of the council stands there. I really think that the rest of the council needs to weigh in on how they want to go about this, because that will help us figure out which of these things can we talk about coming off of all of this excess money that we have? Because as I've stated already, we don't want to sit on this money, we want to use this money and do good work. Um, I think we're all on that page. Uh, but I, I, I think it's healthy for it to bubble up from staff, based on this deficiency or this overall CIP kind of approach. or this overall CIP kind of approach that that our administrator wants to take. So I I think I'd love to hear from more councilmen about where they're at with making decisions here. Because I agree, it's hard to make decisions, but we can make some. Just not sure how far we'll get.
What, you're asking for a prioritization of the list?
Yeah, well, I mean, how how, yeah, and how do you want to approach it?
The actual projects, um, I would uh, I mean, with with the water main extensions, I would go with something that's gonna bring in money. I think that's, that'd be a good place to start. We've got Mylan, Coal Valley, uh, Silves. I mean, we want to keep the money rolling in, we got a lot of money right now, we want to keep it rolling in. Prioritize those as a way, you know, it'd make, keep our water fund healthy, I think, in the long term. Uh, so I'd move those up the list. And if the arsenal bridge deck is really in that bad a shape, I think it does need to, we do need to have staff at some point get back to us before we have another incident with cement falling on people.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brian, Mr. Walburn.
I guess I approached it a tiny bit different, like for me, like the water and sewer projects are important. But I think those are important for water and sewer fees and the decisions there. There, we already have red water projects we haven't got to last year that didn't get done. We have red water projects we need to do this year. We've already set aside three million for water and sewer projects. I'm satisfied if we can get those done in the next two years, I'd be thrilled. Uh, so for me, the water and sewer aren't as big and I'm talking, they're utilizing their own funds. So I'm more back to the bonding capacity and the general fund reserves. And how much of that do we want to spend? And I specifically looking, and we just took three and a half million out of the reserves. So I'm tempted not to mess around with reserves myself personally at this point. And I'm more inclined to take a look at ARP dollars and the bond and what we can get done in the bonding. Now, certainly the arsenal bridge ramp is an important one to me, but I'd kind of like to wait and see if we can get some federal money out of that transportation bill if that would come along. Then for me, the other ones are street projects. We've already put three million towards the white zone, I agree with Alderman Went. I don't want to say six million and the and the state get wind of that, next thing you know, the project's gonna be six million. So I I'm satisfied there. So the re- and the rest of it comes down to prioritizing off this this list, those those uh street projects for me. And on Alderman Went's list, I have a lot of stuff that I see this from PMT and Renew, from the listings that we've seen there from the ULI project. Some of those, I actually agree with Alderman Schmidt. We don't know how those are gonna come available and when they're gonna come available for decision-making. We don't even own the land yet. So it's difficult for me to prioritize a park for four-point-seven million in land we don't even own. Church owns some, state still owes some. We're a long way off from knowing what we're gonna do there and we haven't even had discussions with the park board. Do they want to support a park down there? We already know that the park department's resources are stretched. We keep adding parks, it's not gonna help. We've added the little cul-de-sac areas off the seventy-four that they need to maintain. And if we're talking about a four-point-seven million dollar park at the foot of I-74, that's even more maintenance. So I'm inclined to take those projects like Alderman Schmidt said, as they come. Now, that doesn't get to Alderman Went's problem or decision, what we're gonna use to bond with. And I am open to hear what staff has to say when you've talked about philosophies, Mayor, and how to approach this. I'm open to listening to what the bandwidth is of staff, what they think is their priority for bonding. Then I would like to sit down, listen to the council based on what staff has given us and then say, eh, it doesn't really meet what we want, staff, I'd really like you to see this more than what you gave us. So I guess my philosophy is probably more in line with yours, if that made any any sense to anybody. It's not like I was rambling to myself.
I think we got it, but yeah, I think I understood. Mr. Moore, are you ready?
Yeah, I guess I I can go, I, because all these points are good points and and we do know that these projects are gonna come. We know they're gonna come, at some point we're gonna have to know. My my position is is that w- w- we we really need to, you know, protect those reserves, right? We need to start formulating the plans and I I trust that you're going to do that. I just think that we, you know, like I said, we we need to determine which, as we come forward, we need to determine which ones of these are gonna move first. We don't know about the Arsenal Bridge, we don't, we don't know what we're gonna do there. Are we gonna have the emergency access and take down part of it? Are we gonna tear down the whole thing or, you know, what are we gonna do? And I I think the sooner we can get some of these answers, the sooner we can start to figure out, you know, where we're gonna be in the future. We don't, we we are gonna have to figure out what we're gonna do with the I-74 redevelopment with the with the park, how we're gonna fund the parks department to do those things, those are important things.
Which was also part of your presentation is that we still have a fully funding situation to deal with, with parks, correct? Maybe I said that wrong, not fully funding, but we have a larger plan to deal with with parks and library. Previous conversation.
Oh, I'm sorry, the operating, we have to get the operating for the parks and library over the next three years to come up with some more permanent revenues.
And so as parks potentially expand, that's a good timing of things, but we might be getting ahead of ourselves if we got too far about things. But um, Mr. Timmy, are we to you?
Uh, I'm I'm mostly going to echo Alderman Walburn. I think that a lot of these are good projects that will come. Uh, some of them we don't own the land for, as you mentioned, with the exception of the Fifth Avenue and and Twenty-third Street, which I would be a giant advocate for. Um, I know that Renew has talked about that project as well. I think it's uh in line with our downtown redevelopment as well as connecting with the university. I I'm personally, I'd say tear down the bridge, but the that's, I I think that's kind of a nuclear option. But I I I do want to just reiterate, we do have a professional staff and they're very aware of all of these priorities. And we pay them for this privilege. I am not that person. So I I I I will rely on on their expertise quite a bit on on how they they proceed and how they would like to um prioritize a lot of these items. I think they're very aware of the bridge issue as well, so hopefully th- these these resolutions are coming from them.
Mr. Moore? Well, I'll come back to you, you, go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Just is is along the same lines, some of the thought process that they do know better, ju- just like uh Alderman, Timmy and said. And there's items on here that I really didn't know about before, so how am I gonna start prior- making priorities? When I I didn't know anything about this Midland Davis relocation, South Park Mall Sports Complex. Actually don't really like that idea myself, you know, so, but I don't know the full details. So I don't think it's fair for us to be making those kind of decisions on things we haven't really been um gotten all the information a- about as well. And again, I would defer back to the staff. And in fact, we've been doing a lot of this planning already, um, wh- when we've been discussing the ARP dollars and also the budgeting. And the staff has given us some recommendations. So I feel like, i- i- yeah, are we dictating to them, do these very specific projects, allocate funds for all this stuff? Is that the best way to do it? Probably not. Um, I I it it should be more of a a working together with them as opposed to dictating, this is exactly where we want our priorities. And again, I don't know about some of these projects, so I'm I'm not in a position to make those kind of decisions.
I just wanna, I wanna jump in at that exact moment because I know Alderman Went and I talked about this on Friday last week. And it really relates to everybody being able to know what's going on, myself included, right? I've got a great staff who know a lot more about this city than I do. And I got all these great ideas on how to improve the city, but I need their mental resources to make that happen. That's the key, even as an administrator, you have, you know, we have to have that knowledge. And you have to have that knowledge to get informed. So one of the things we're talking about is, you know, we meet a lot. We meet two times a week, two times a month, three times a month really, and and lately a heck of a lot more. Part of the thought going forward is, is that we would, you know, have just our regular, you know, two meetings a month where you can conduct official business and and votes and and get things done. But taking a day, any day during the month that works best for us, roll back to slaves, pick a subject area that's important to this city, whether it's economic development, whether it's I-74, whether it's that south slope treatment plant problem or development south of the Rock River. And and have that kind of like sleeve-back, brown bag lunch kind of an environment where we really have a heart-to-heart conversation. Nobody's voting on anything, there's no motions and it's just an open exchange and understanding presentation. You know, like a roundtable discussion. Because I I think that would benefit the full council. I think it would be helpful for staff because we'd all get to know you better than we do. It builds, it's great for team building. And when we walk out of those meetings, we really know what Midland Davis wants or doesn't want, because I have met with them, you know? And and yes, they want to, no, they don't want to. It's a real, it's a tough choice, it's a family choice because that's where their roots are, right? So, you know, call it Midland whatever and they might be happy, okay? With granddaddy and great-granddaddy on the wall, on the wall, that's important to them. So I think if we have these roundtable discussions, brown bag lunch kind of environment, whatever it takes, whether it's a Saturday or or whether it's a, you know, an af- late afternoon, whatever it work, whatever works best for council. I would love to entertain that concept so that everybody can gets up to speed quickly, you know? We could bring Alex in, she's got a wealth of knowledge and information to share, right? And we've tapped Carol pretty good and we're gonna keep tapping, we're gonna tap her out. I don't want her to tap out like a bad wrestling match. So, you know, we we talk about community development, block grant programs, we bring KJ in and she leads that, she's a discussion leader. There is just so much complexity to this organization that our citizens have no clue what's going on in here, let alone even some of us. So we want to get on the same page together and that's that's my suggestion to help this discussion along tonight.
And then I I want to follow up.
Yeah, and to that point, Bob, if you can make that happen.
Yeah.
You'd be, I'd be your biggest fan in the world. Because that is, for the last couple of years, if you look at our calendar, we had uh a a council meeting in red and then a yellow work session and then a a council meeting. And how many of those actually materialized? We need you to lead that to make sure it happened. It it they turn into a presentation and no, none of this what you're talking about, where we really kind of learn and discuss and talk and and those sorts of things. So I I couldn't agree with you more, I've got, you've got all my support in the world for that.
Thank you.
To the point and 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 maybe I'm not communicating well. I I was talking about like, as we go through these things, we provide what our priorities are to staff and they come back and give us their input on what can happen and what can't happen. My fear and what I have seen over time, and it is natural that if there are eighty-seven things, because we had whatever, eighty-seven objectives and all these different things that we had on there, without any clear, real uh um prioritization, it is natural that, because I do it at my office, I I do the things that I feel the most comfortable with and that are probably the easiest, that I can knock off the list and and those sorts of things. But that's not always what the most uh important thing to the residents or to this council or or those sorts of things. And so that's where we need to give them, I think it's irresponsible as us, as the governing body, not to give them clear direction. Because then they come back with things and we're like, hey, well, why haven't you talked about this thing? Well, because we didn't give you any direction, we gave you eighty-seven things and you came back with these seven things you're gonna do next year? And we say, oh, wait a minute, I really want the Coannis, why didn't that get get put in there? That's our job, is to give them, now, if it's unrealistic or if it's something that can't be done or that it's going to take multiple years, they give us our feedback, awesome. But if I had a a boss that said, hey, do these eighty-seven things, good luck, that's not a good boss. And that's our responsibility is to give direction to Bob so that he can lead this organization. And he'll push back on us if we give things that are unrealistic. But we have to give some direction. It's it's not fair to staff because I've seen them when they've come back with things and we didn't give clear direction to them. And they're like, I thought that's what you wanted. And we did, we weren't clear on what our direction was.
Understood. Um, I think that your A and B on this chart, it's uh this page, makes a whole lot of sense for us to have a vote or even further discussion on twenty-five percent of our um policy or for the policy versus twenty. That is a great direction we can give. I would argue that we have spoken to priorities, staff does have direction because they have years in which these projects that were identified in the strategic plan need to be done, in which they need to be done. That's one kind of direction. I think when it comes to, and to your point about maybe speaking more clearly about what your intent is, it's these quote leftover projects that need some identification. And what I'm hearing from the council, um, and and certainly you can vote on on how to proceed in some way, is that they're comfortable coming to a collaborative approach on this based on what Bob understands the staff can get done. And that if we combine that with his suggested uh meeting schedule and topic schedule or not not just meeting, but um the manner in which those special meetings happen or those work sessions happen, that will get us to this place of very clearly sending a message about, okay, this is what we really have to address right now. Because he knows the capacity of the staff to get to any more of these projects than what they've already identified in the current budget. That's how I'm understanding it. I I'm not sure where to see debate on this idea or to to move forward with any further allocations. Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
And and I guess, I think I fall a little bit in the middle because I think that the direction we have already given is of pushing staff onward. But I think we know that projects are gonna come up and things come up that are urgent and those things will make it to this this council. I think those will find their way here. And we 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 have, the the staff will be bringing those items through. And some of these things um may not be a priority at this moment, but if something breaks or moves, that those are the, not the things we need to be setting ourselves up to. And I don't, I don't believe that us kind of figuring out every single item in here and like, down to the, putting them all in order or 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 setting those big money pieces aside in one attack makes sense. But I do think that taking our biggest priorities, identifying five of the biggest ones to say, hey, these really need to start working into that process and that plan.
And that's what would would develop if you actually did the process. Because you put your money and and those things would come to the top of the top five, eight things or or whatever. And so I I hear what you're saying, but if you actually did the exercise, that's what would happen.
Well, and it's the the problem in using dollar figures is that it 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 puts it to a, it puts it in a different scale for different sizes of projects.
More difficult, yeah, without question.
Well, I I don't, I think it makes it more difficult to identify which are actually the most important. Because dollars does not necessarily equate, like, like, and it comes back to the cost of those individual items. And it, it's essentially taking a charrette system, but instead of twelve votes, I've got twenty million.
Exactly.
So I'm not hearing agreement that we should do it based on dollars.
I and and I just, I also think that we don't, without the dollars, without having that timing. I mean, and and maybe there is a clear consensus of like, this is the one thing that we really need to know and then maybe that is the bridge. And we want to learn a little bit more of what's the realistic timelines and costs we're talking about. And and I guess I I what I would like to see is if we just came to that consensus around some of those biggest items. One other big item that that I think didn't make this list, I think a lot of what people have said is there. I I think that we've talked about the possibility of working toward getting some of our own crews, working on some of the smaller road projects and smaller repairs and those sorts of things. And if there was an opportunity for the investment in the startup, for getting the the equipment we need, training we might need to get some of those people in place, um, that'd be something I'd like to see us consider on that kind of a perspective too.
So what I, what I heard um, it as we went around, we didn't get to you. Mr. Williams, can't forget you, tell us what your thoughts are.
I would echo everything that's already been said, other than I like the idea of constant beating the drum on the I-74 development that is so huge, it could very easily That is so huge, it could very easily been be pushed to the side because it's. There's so much work to be done, but as long as that's a constant priority and top of mind, that would be the most important.
Uh, and then I have already reiterated that uh. The infrastructure jumps out on the page, but so does anything regarding economic development. So I seventy four redevelopment zone stuff. Huge for uh planning ahead. Um. But. I see head nods.
Well, and and I would argue. Number two through number eight or whatever, Spiegel, I mean. The twenty two center uh project for the parking needs, the seventh avenue reconstruction, the. Fifth and sixth avenues and the Spiegel redevelopment, actually all should probably be over economic development.
Yeah, they they, yeah, I'm not sure why they're not there, but if they're supposed to be.
And so that's where, I I mean. Having lots of discussions about which pillar it should go in is a nice discussion, but that doesn't get us to. What we need to get to of where are we going to direct staff to spend the money to get things done? I mean, you can, you can put it in a green column or in a yellow column. The 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 issue is, is this something that we want? To direct them that says, hey, we want know that twenty two is is a heavy budget year, but. If you if you can get this done in twenty twenty three. Let's start to putting it in and if that's the case, be like, well, maybe we're gonna have to do some outside engineering. We gotta. Extra bandwidth, wh- whatever those things are so that we can then actually start planning for it rather than waiting till twenty twenty three to have the conversation. And then at that point say, well, we don't have the bandwidth and you know, then we're right back where we, because I've gone through this for. There's a number of us that have gone through this for for a number of years where there's been things and they just get. Pushed. I mean, our streets are a perfect example. Every year there's a million, million and a half worth of uh. Projects that don't get done, that get get bumped.
So are, is there consensus that this, I forget which one of you said it, but the things that bring in money, whether it's the development zone stuff. Or it's our util- utilities or water.
Water.
Right, that that's a major priority that staff should look at? Yes.
It is for me.
Is there consensus on that?
Th- there's consensus, I think, but the the problem is that some of these things we just don't know about. We don't know when they're gonna come up or how we're gonna pay for them when they do happen.
Right, so we can't decide that now, but the point is we were asked to to potentially give some top tier things so that they could come back. When we set up the system of special meetings, special topics, that these are the first things we'd like you to address.
Yeah.
I seventy four redevelopment approaches. That the memo from Alex, et cetera, it is very full, but maybe you could get us the big, the. Well, I like how Alex, if you don't mind me using, is how she talks about easy wins or early wins with some of those recommendations. What can we get to that? And then what are the things that are, take a lot more planning?
Yep.
Right? Then we, I heard in this discussion, I heard streets and other infrastructure, that that is a second top priority. For this council. To get caught up on deferred maintenance. Am I hearing that correctly? I'm seeing thumbs up and head nods. Okay. Do we have another two or three? Top things that that they could come back with in twenty two to talk to us about?
The and and this gets into the I seventy four thing, but it was a discussion that was made. That and we get back to, you know, previous votes by this council. And if we wanna deviate from that, we've gotta have that discussion. The. We had made a a commitment, we have told the community that we are going to do a uh park. On the riverfront and that was something that had been, I think it was unanimous voted by this council. If we're thinking that that is not. Something we are going to do or direct staff, that that has to be part of our. Future use of funds and if, you know, Alex had put down, you know, about four point seven million dollars for for something like that. The assumption is we're gonna get, I haven't, I I've never heard anything that says we're not going to get that that land down there. But if we're thinking that that's not something we're going to do, we gotta have that discussion. If not. We gotta have a discussion is, you know, four point seven million, uh, a a right number. Is it something we wanna do larger? Because it's, that's that's one of those things where it'll, if we spend all this other places.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, it's it that that land's gonna land in our lap and then we're gonna be like, oh, crap, now. We either have to bond more, we gotta find some other way to do it and.
So central to I seventy four development umbrella is the great riverfront park. Is how, is is that what you're saying?
Well, I I think that is, it is an element that has already been decided. I mean, it's not more important than the other things, but I think it, unless we say otherwise right now. It is an element that has been decided. And so the the decision becomes on what the costs are and. How much we're going to allocate for something like that. Do we want it to be a signature park or do we just want it some green space that's a long road?
Okay, and I also heard in this uh larger discussion, the viaduct bridge, the Arsenal Viaduct Bridge.
It's huge.
Yeah, tha- that is, whether we like it or not, that has to be decided soon.
Yeah. Um, and I think that it should definitely. Uh, not be devoid of connections to the ULI recommendations about linking everything and what happens, it's it's not. In a vacuum there by itself, but what happens when it's gone and how do we make that? So there's all these overlap. Was there, that, so I have three major things down, Bob, are you understanding it that way?
I've got the Arsenal Bridge here, I have the uh.
Streets and I seventy four redevelopment.
Yeah, I'm looking for I seventy four acquisition, dedication. Wait a minute, I need this other list, hang on. You're looking off of the uh, the whitelist.
Um, well, it's both, I I I'm taking our larger discussion to try to, you know. Come to the middle here with our top things that are, that don't have dollars. Yes, things that bring in money.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to be able to come back and have like a. Yeah, there's a lot going on already with Renew Moline in the city and, you know, the form-based code, for example, we're gonna be bringing forward a recommendation very, very shortly to award that contract. We're waiting for one more reference check and that is that, and the reference check is on one of the preferred firms. And I don't wanna move forward without it. I wanna have something. You're gonna spend that kinda money. I want a basis more than just a proposal. I want, I want, I want references, so. We'll bring that back to you and, you know, and we're gonna be very busy for twelve months working on that, probably starting in January. It's gonna take a full twelve months and. And we will work on that year round, all of twenty two and deliver a result hopefully before Christmas. Hopefully earlier, uh Thanksgiving would be better. Um, and that's the community engagement part, which is gonna get heavily into discussion about what's going on down there. You know, then you got the ULI plan and there's an outgrowth of the outgrowth of this form-based code, we'll get into a discussion about. Those amenities. I mean, they have to be planned for as a part of the form-based code. And all the different tweaks and turns and elements of it that you refer to have to be made to come to reality. And once you have that master plan and somebody goes and they 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 look at it, they can actually cost it for you. Is it four point seven? Is it three point six? Is it ten point two? I don't know. I just know when I built the twenty seven acre park in Key West, we we knew exactly what that park was gonna cost. And it was really spot on. I mean, at the end of the day, what was going in, every feature, every element. And it was all costed out, so. You're gonna want that level of detail so that it informs your financial decision making. And how much you might borrow or how much you might, you know, beg for or how much you might get donate or how much you might as a grant. I mean, people would contribute towards stuff like that, right? Yeah.
So, so, uh, um, just to review, we've got. Items that bring in dollars with regard to sewer, water, et cetera, right? We have I seventy four redevelopment. Information, especially the the park details. We have streets, we have the viaduct bridge. That feels to me like a a nice chunk of information we could ask for from January to April. Um, and then utilizing the process that Mr. Vitas has given us. Uh, we, let's see. Action plans and the CIP and, you know, we'd be revisiting these things.
Revisiting one of, one of the.
One phase.
One element out of a phase.
Yeah.
And that's the CIP phase element, which is probably the single most important.
So that that is, is our understanding as a council going forward, that they don't just fall off the radar. But that we're constantly coming back to this via our special topic meetings or formerly known as work session meetings, right? The, is it the yellow boxes on the calendar versus the yellow box on the calendar? Um, does that make sense?
Well, and and to that, I mean, that is really good. I think it it gave staff time in between council sessions. To do those things and allowed us to actually, well, the idea was to to go through. My question though. I I wanna be, make sure we're specific. So when we talk about things that produce money. I mean, selling water to Coal Valley and and doing those things, yeah, eh, but. You know, like one of the things we have on here is the collector's center, parking needs, parking ramp. Do you, it, is that included in your?
Well, that's the first time someone's brought it up as a really.
Well, no, I I I said.
I mean, it's here, but.
Number three through number seven on the green should be in the yellow and and that's where we get into what co- but. That's why I I think talking specifics is important because if you're talking about something that. Hopefully will then bring in money and hopefully solve a three point eight million dollar deficit in a TIF. We've got to have that kinda discussion and we gotta have it sooner than later because. The tip only lasts so long or.
So, so a a good point, what 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 Bob could do, if I might suggest. Is these big items that we've noted. You can take the detailed items and do sort of what you've done here, but put them under these things here and then we can see that document anytime. But that's his guide to work with staff. Of knowing your capacity for this work and the timelines we're on in terms of special, um, special meetings.
Yeah, I mean, one of the, one of the things that we need to do once we know that you have a budget that you're going to adopt. Right, that we can actually go forward. We have to publish a notice, right? We're out of time. We have to publish the notice in order to get it in the newspaper to meet the legal requirement. Once I know that we're going forward and there's not gonna be any more ups or downs or changes. Then it's time to sit down with staff and drill down on that action plan. And that action plan exists as a draft right now that nobody has seen but Macy and I, okay? And I'm still reviewing it, unfortunately, she's out this way for a couple of days now, well. So. We will then sit down with staff and start to roll out how we're gonna get these projects out the door. Are they gonna be started in the first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, not at all? We don't know yet. But we have to take a look at the at the staff resource, I have to balance that against the projects they need to do. And then come back and I will present, you know, we, not I, but the staff and I will present that action plan to you. So you're gonna have an idea of how many projects there are, who's doing them, when they're gonna get launched, hopefully when they'll be completed. You know, and we're gonna take the mystery away, because I think that's, every council's biggest concern is mystery. Nobody likes mystery. And neither do I as a manager, so this is going to actually help us to get a real clear picture. On how to add some of these in. At the same time, you already have a huge list that was already included in the budget. And these would be like twenty threes.
Right, so action plan plus spe- special topics.
Well, it.
Shows out the picture.
And 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 that's, because I think by the end of the year, we have to publish our meetings for for next year.
Yes, you do.
Yeah, when when is that by, Janine?
This month.
Is that by, just by the end of the year, you gotta publish for the following year, next calendar year?
We always do it in December, yeah. It has to be done in December.
So if if we could, together with that, would we, is is have the list of all the the things? Because we we, I I understand what you're talking about, about twenty two things that we budgeted for. These are things that. If you can add them in in twenty two, great, but I'm, my expectation is most of this stuff is going to be. Twenty twenty three, four or five, it's exactly. So if we can do that as part of those yellow meetings of the year.
Thank you very much. I I know this didn't look exactly as you were expecting, but I think we've come to a place where we can all live.
Just glad we had a discussion, yeah.
And I think we should probably move to the motions that, um, Ms. Barnes needs unless you have another comment or question.
I'm sorry, I have one more question, because we just didn't get to this part, but I do think it's worthwhile to bring up. Um, and that's just talking about the bonding level. We we discussed it and we just kinda, um. And I guess my perspective and the perspective I bring is, um, I think maintaining the bonding level we've had is good. But I'm also not in a rush to go, just because it's there, I don't feel the need to run out and spend it. I think our, the goal of not exceeding is where I would stand. Um, and looking at. We're working through these things and when they come up and they're going to have those costs or we go and we find, okay, we got a sixty percent grant here and eighty percent grant here, that is when we would use it. And nor that probably by the time we get to the park, we'll definitely wanna have some of that bonding capacity available.
Mister, Miss Seuss.
Does wanna point out rates are historically low, so if you're gonna go, this is the time to borrow. Uh. We we, you don't get those opportunities at all times, so just one more.
And when we have a good thing, yes, but I'm not sure I need to go borrow for something in a couple of years.
Responsibly, yeah.
Okay. Is there any more discussion on the RAN topic? Yes, Mister Timmy.
Uh, Carol, what is your recommendation on this since the the water WPC are going to be so healthy? Do you think it is, I mean, if whether it's in the general or in that fund, if there's an emergency, we can pay for it from the general or the other. Is it probably just better to keep it in the general for higher flexibility?
To keep access reserves, it does give you more flexibility.
Yeah, and that's just so.
And we can always come back and address this, it, you know, it doesn't have to be during the budget, it can be, you know, something comes up. We can always change our minds, but yeah, the general fund users are more likely.
Thank you.
Mister, one.
I'll I'll make the motion to do nothing and push it out, I guess, whatever the timeframe for your original uh uh payback was. Knowing that if we get in a pinch, we can always draw back.
Nice, second thought.
Alright, uh, motion by Alderman one, second by Alderman two, man. Question from me is, is that number one? Or if that's, yes, okay, got it. Thank you.
I think it's the.
Yes, that is true.
Status quo, no changes.
No changes. Yes, it's a term holder.
Just so I make sure, so we're keeping the loan from WPC and Water. Yeah. They're making interest, they're financially solid, I I agree. Yes, and and that's why we put that interest when we originally did it was because, you know, and and I guess a point of inquiry. Um, isn't the. Didn't they also give a loan to the Catherine's table?
Yeah.
And aren't they also getting interest on that as well? Okay, I just just wanna make sure, because that's a diff- that's a, that's another. Avenue where you could then load it to the park so that we could pay them back and then, or, so. There's, there are, there are some WPC and Water funds that are. Out there in different pockets that we can eventually make them healthier.
So what is the actual motion?
So.
Do not do.
To to then as.
To do not.
I'll do the RANs.
On the RAN, do not. Stay the way they are, okay, no, so there's no action.
So we have accomplished both items? Uh, or no?
Once we vote, we vote.
Once we hold on it.
Oh, yeah.
Carol's second bullet.
Alright, so, all in favor of?
Aye.
Aye.
Any?
Let's keep this long.
You already done that motion passes. Alright, yes, Mister Schmidt.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the twenty twenty one. Budget, the, adopt the amended twenty twenty one budget as presented.
Second.
Alright, um, motion by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Meyer, discussion. Mister, one.
Um, I guess I'd like to make a uh an amendment that we keep the tax levy. The same as it was in, uh, twenty twenty.
That's, we did that.
This is the twenty twenty one budget.
Oh.
Oh, wait, what?
We're doing twenty twenty one.
I'm making a motion to adopt the amended twenty twenty one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you were saying the twenty twenty two, okay. I I saw the twenty twenty two schedule up on the top and it threw me.
Okay, so it's that first highlighted bullet point, correct? Alright, is there a second there?
I'll second that.
Oh, that, well, you already did. Lord, I'm losing track. I'm here. Alright, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that motion passes.
Okay.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
On Carol's first bullet under eleven two twenty one, the bonding level for the pool in combination of drawing down reserves, we've done the second part of. Drawing down the reserves, do we actually need to have a vote? To make up the difference for the bonding level for the pool or is that already done?
Me taking options. Me taking option four, which is the one you chose.
Well, we we did option four, that's enough.
Within four, that ends the pool discussion, discussion.
Yes.
You don't, you don't need a vote or anything, you're good?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
The three point five.
Okay.
Okay. Um.
What else is missing?
And it's the fourth bullet, isn't it?
I thought it was.
Yes, we need the fourth, fourth.
We need a motion on the twenty twenty-two budget, Carol?
Yes.
A move to adopt the twenty twenty-two budget as presented with the changes that were adopted this evening.
Second.
All right, motion by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Timian.
Now, I. Can try one more time.
Yes, Mr. Went.
Uh, sorry, that, we we skipped it, we skipped a bullet point. Uh, so, uh, I guess I would make the, uh, um, amendment that we change the tax levy to match the twenty twenty-one levy, uh, making it, uh, level, which would result in a hundred and forty-four thousand dollar difference? Is that where we're at?
So, that's what we did last week.
I think we did that.
No, you're trying, you're matching the dollar figure, not the percentage used to cut it, right?
Right, so I'm saying the the same dollar figure, so we are not increasing the levy this year under this, uh, amendment.
Similar to what we kept trying to say.
Well, before we had actually, we were gonna reduce it.
Okay, so, there's a motion, is there a second for that?
Second.
All right, motion by Alderman Went, second by Alderman Waldron. Uh, Mr. Schmidt.
Um, I, you know, with the motion we brought last week and bringing back to using the same rate to calculate at, um, is a way to move forward and make sure that we are moving forward without raising taxes. There has been growth in the city, and for us to not take advantage of that growth, and for us to not take the added funds that we need, because it compounds year over years, we have to give raises to our employees as our costs go up. I think it's irresponsible for us to regrettably tax in a situation where we are saying we're gonna take in less money because that is cutting services. So I'm opposed to the motion.
Anyone else? Mr. Went.
Um, I I I understand your theory and and, um, in other circumstances, I may a- agree with you and I have actually in the past and and fought with, uh, Alderman Waldron about this, but, um, but I'm taking a different approach. I'm taking the Alderman Waldron's approach on this, this year, because this is not reducing services in any way, shape, or form. We are sitting now on three point six million dollars of excess, uh, 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 reserves just in our general fund. Uh, we still have money in our contingencies and in 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 that, um, and what we're doing is we're asking our residents, who have gone through a pandemic for the last two years, to, in almost all cases, spend, pay more in taxes. Granted, their, the price of their home has gone up, but it's not a realized, it's a paper increase. Until they sell their home, they don't realize it. What they realize is an increase in taxes. And almost every single person on that list you saw has an increase in taxes. And what we're doing is, this isn't going to result in us not being able to provide any services for twenty twenty-two. We are sitting on three point six million dollars of excess, plus our contingencies i- in there. And so what we are, uh, in effect, doing to all of those people in this situation is we are raising their taxes. And, to your point where I I will agree with you, next year, when that TIF expires, there is going to be a large chunk of money that comes on. And in that situation, I think we will probably increase the levy to capture some portion of that, and I think that that is fiscally sound. But to do it now, when you're sitting on and effectively hoarding three point six million dollars worth of, uh, uh, reserves, hopefully we'll we'll spend it, but clearly we've, we've talked, some of these things aren't gonna happen for multiple years down the road because we don't have the bandwidth to do it in twenty twenty-two. You are voting to increase your residents' taxes while sitting on a pile of money. And that's where I say that we, uh, leave the levy exactly where it was last year.
Right, so we had quite a bit of this conversation last week. Uh, not much has changed in anyone's opinions. Uh, I will say, I believe what was passed last week is the middle ground. And that allows us to get through negotiations next year with some flexibility, um, with some of our units. Um, we have, uh, lots of things we want to accomplish. We're just talking about adding in more projects that don't necessarily have a resource allocated to them. Um, it, when you're in a period of growth, taking a responsible, very even, um, approach to keeping your levy, um, even, I think is is a good way to go and does not have us jerking the public back and forth between different rates. Um, it's it's a much more sound way to go. Mr. Schmidt.
And I think that as we move toward, um, if we don't take advantage of that growth and we don't follow those rates as they change, um, it will still raise some people's taxes. And that percentage will, or the burden in that change will fall to people who did not have growth in their own properties. Because as you, as those values have been updated and brought to more appropriate, it is the people who have the greatest growth in their value that are going to see that increased dollar amount. And if we cut that back and we say we're gonna take the exa- that exact same number, we're saying that we're going to spread that out and we're, it's, it's going to fall back on people who are not realizing that growth at all.
Mr. Monsieur.
Uh, well, I just wanna point out, um, when we pa- passed the the bonding, uh, because we had this reserves, we were able to save, what, one point three million dollars? Um, it it's an opportunity, so reserves are also an opportunity. So it's not a bad thing to be sitting on that kinda stuff. We're gonna be saving a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. So it's okay to have those reserves beyond just for emergency, they can save you some money. So, now, on, to to the point, uh, of changing it, or messing with the tax levy, I I I said with you, we really need to be looking forward. There's a lot of big projects and we were just discussing how much, uh, th- these leftover projects are gonna cost and having to make priorities and those tough decisions. So, before we make that decision, I don't wanna put us in a position that, you know, we might regret and have to raise the the levy later on, so, um, yeah, I I'm with you.
Mr. Turner.
Uh, Carol, we we've had lengthy, y- you and I, we had a lengthy discussion about, um, how the increased tax levy is a a recurring revenue stream, and that is what's required for recurring costs like, uh, new positions. And that's really what we're talking about. We just saved a hundred and seventy K per year in debt service tonight by using reserves. Is that a fiscal, uh, a a responsible revenue source for these positions? Or are we still in the same position? Because savings isn't necessarily revenue. Therefore, because of where it's coming from. So we can't really use the savings for these recurring, uh, expenses like positions and and employment. Am I making my question clear? I I just, I, because th- these dollar values are similar. I- is this a responsible, reasonable place to use that money for? Or is it just kind of, because it is not really a recurring revenue stream, it wouldn't be a good place to, uh, to use to fund those, uh, positions?
I'm sorry, you need a little bit of.
Yeah, I I I apologize. The the math makes sense in my head, maybe same.
Mr. Moore.
I had a similar question, because you.
I think the difference is that there's various funds that that are affected by this. And and if you're talking about the debt services being saved, they're saving the debt service fund, which then falls back on the home rule taxes of the sixty percent that's in the CIP, so it's not operating for salaries.
Right.
Um, but that was a fiscally good decision that was made tonight.
But they're not related.
No.
They're not.
Absolutely.
There we go, Mr. Tim, Mr. Meyer.
To, I think, if I understand what you're saying, and I was thinking about this myself earlier and forgot about it, um, the bond, the the bond that that we currently have doesn't fall off for another, well, not this year, but the year after.
Yeah.
So we were gonna pay out of the general fund, the first year's payment, which was gonna be four hundred and fifty-five thousand. Now we're only gonna be paying.
Yes.
Two hundred and eighty-four.
Yeah.
Was that your question, and that two hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna save right there is actually less money? So we'll, we'll actually have a lower, when the next iteration of the budget comes out, we'll actually have saved another close to two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, the general fund is like either rock with that trade space or boost.
That's partially related, except that I understand that, uh, salaries need to come from a recurring stream, not necessarily savings. Which, uh, just, uh, in terms of, like, credit rating and how Moody's view views us and everything else. So, the responsible thing is to tie a recurring revenue stream to recurring employment expenses. Not assuming that this, uh, pool of money will always be there. And so that was really my question, is if, you know, these are in different buckets, so they're not really the same conversation. Just because we're saving this, this recurring cost that you baked into the original budget, we can't just allocate it now to to salaries because debt service savings is not the same. Home rule tax is not the same as employment.
Okay, thank you.
Expenses.
Mr. Went.
And to put a finer point on why these are completely not related at all, we, y- y- you have to remember that we transferred the additional four hundred thousand dollars that was gonna be in general fund to pay for the debt service. We actually made a motion that that was going to go to parks to cover the debt service. Well, now the debt service is not four hundred and forty-five, uh, thousand dollars, it's now two hundred and.
Eighty-five, eighty-four.
Se- whatever, whatever, eighty, whatever. So we actually have an additional hundred and twenty-some thousand dollars that we are transferring to parks that is not going to be going towards the debt service that we thought that they were going to be paying for. So, it has nothing to do with reoccurring costs for, uh, employees or anything like that. Really, all it would be doing is transferring what actually the parks need to pay for their their debt service and and taking out another twelve thousand dollars out of contingency, and we don't have to raise taxes. And the the parks are are made exactly whole of what they were expecting for this year. We take twelve thousand dollars out, I think it's twelve thou- my math may be off by a thousand or two, but out of contingency, and we don't have to raise the taxes of our residents. That's all I'm asking, is twelve thousand dollars out of contingency, and we do not have to raise the taxes of our, uh, our residents. Because this money is not being used for, uh, additional s- staff and and those sorts of things. It was earmarked to be used for debt service that we now are not taking on.
Any further comments on this, uh, motion?
I guess I just have a question. I mean, Carol, based upon whichever way this vote goes, I mean, and in terms of getting your work done to get that notice out, cause you've probably already prepared everything for the most part. Would that be a fair statement?
It's prepared, but I knew that there would be some final changes.
There might be some final adjustments, and that, the growth, the growth actually, just so the record's clear, the growth was one point.
One five.
One point one five percent from the prior year to the current year in terms of value increase. And that was predominantly residential and almost non- nonexistent commercial growth, or zero industrial growth. So it's being driven based upon investments in homes that people are making because they're sitting there and they're rebuilding their houses and their values are going up, even though the paper value, Alderman, is up here. The real value that they're being taxed at is here, and the transaction when it takes place is what generates the actual property tax increase for some house that's been sitting with the same owner for thirty years. So, I mean, it's.
These assessments have been.
Yeah, so, I mean, the the ques- the question is, is we were, we were generating about a hundred and, was it a hundred and eighty thousand dollars? Is what it is, and where are we at right now based upon the action at the previous meeting, a hundred and forty?
Yeah.
Hundred and forty-four, and and by taking the action you're taking or suggesting, uh, the two Aldermen are suggesting, what does that hundred and forty become? Zero. Zero. So we're giving back a hundred and forty. And what was that hundred and forty funding, just so I know?
It was supposed to be funding debt service that we now don't have.
No, we were told that was to help with the, uh, positions.
Yeah.
No, that's not true.
It is true. It was to fund the six new positions we we asked for.
Yeah, let's talk about it. I wanna make sure before this vote's taken, that I, I, I have to know what to do with this budget then going forward.
Mr. Schmidt.
But is it, this, to a certain extent, talking about that, the sourcing here, the sourcing there, especially when we start dealing with things coming out of the general fund.
Mm-hmm.
It's, that is a shell game as as it's assigned, because overall, it's about what is our, that total budget. And we have some fund limitations on certain pieces. But if we're, especially when we're talking about things coming out of the general fund, it's either being spent here or it's being spent there. And so to say that things that went into the general fund are being spent on a specific thing coming out of the general fund is just a shell game.
Tax levy, how much was going, uh, over and above with parks when we made the amendment? And that, an additional four hundred thousand dollars was was going to go to the general fund, but now is going to the parks, correct?
The original budget as proposed, the four hundred thousand was being proposed to pay for positions. The four hundred thousand that was in the general fund, it was, it was in our power to me.
No, because.
Yes, new personnel, budget highlights.
And and you had said that we were then going to be transferring the money to pay for debt service.
Yes, and we were four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Right, right.
And so you can mix and match the money however you want.
Right, so we we made an amendment to that budget, so right now our current twenty twenty-two budget has that four hundred thousand dollars going to parks, and it's earmarked to do what? Pay for debt service in your, uh, the budget that you have right now. A debt service which is now not four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, but it is instead two hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars. So there is in the built budget right now, four hundred thousand dollars in the Parks Department to pay for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of, uh, um, debt service now, because we made the change tonight. So, all it would take is for that difference of that hundred and twenty-some thousand dollar, uh, that is over and above with the debt services for parks, to be eliminated from the, uh, the, the, uh, the property tax levy. And then we could make up that difference, you know, out of contingency if it needed to be spent on something else, but it, we could send that over to parks or whatever, the additional twenty thousand bucks or whatever, to make up the hundred and forty-four thousand that we are reducing the, uh, uh, the levy, because it would reduce either the the library or the parks, that, that, that small difference. And so we could take it out of contingency to make either the parks or the the libraries whole. Um, and that would be the only changes we'd need to make. It wouldn't change the, uh, what the, uh, the positions we're paying for. It would be somewhere between twelve and twenty thousand dollars out of reserve to either parks or or to library. And we'd be done and wouldn't be paying to raise people's taxes.
We also wouldn't be addressing the operational budget issues for them, but in any case, Mr. Schmidt.
And in addition, we are operating with, I believe it was three hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we were drawing down on reserves in the main budget. I mean, we can find that money anywhere and say we can draw it back from this place or that place. And that is true. We saved some money tonight, and I think that was a good choice. Um, and I do not believe it changes the the fact of where we should be in putting those things forward. And at this point, I would like to call a question.
Second.
All right, uh, motion by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Timian. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Aye.
To.
Wait, wait.
To call the question.
Let's call the question.
What's going on, your amendment, right?
No, we're voting on calling the question. I'm sorry, I should say, this is a vote on calling the question. I'll do it again. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, seven ayes, one nay. All right, so the motion, as it was read, could you restate it as?
Yes, Alderman Went moved to amend to match the tax levy to that of twenty twenty-one so that it remains unchanged and level.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
No, please.
We're doing worse, Michael. Here we go.
Alderman Waldron?
Oh, uh, aye.
Schmidt?
Nay.
Williams?
Aye.
Monsieur?
Nay.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Nay.
Meyer?
Nay.
O'Brien?
Nay.
Three ayes, five nays?
That motion does not pass. Now we need a motion to move forward with adopting the twenty twenty. Now we need a motion to move forward with adopting the twenty twenty-two budget.
So moved.
That that motion was already on the table.
Oh, yes.
That was right.
Oh, my lord. Some wishing hour, okay. Um, and it was seconded, correct? Do we have that down?
Yes.
Thank you. Discussion, Mr. Schmidt.
With the change in the debt service, I do believe that bears a question of reducing that amount that we have committed to the parks. Um, I guess. I would need to make a motion to discuss that, wouldn't I?
No.
It's still, yeah, okay, it's it's about, I'm trying to make sure I'm on topic.
Yeah.
My thought would be to pull that back to the appro- appropriate amount and then reduce the drawdown. But I would also ask Carol first before I would move forward with anything, is is now the right time to do that? Or would we need to a- amend after we've seen what that final number is wanting to be next week? Or where, where should that land?
He's asking, like, when is the best time to make an amendment to the budget like that?
It would be probably to do it now.
As soon as possible.
Quickly, as much as I agree with Alderman's went, uh, amendment a while ago, I would say that I would leave the money alone. There is certainly innumerable projects the parks can do. Uh, they have a whole list of playgrounds, parking lots, things.
East End Park.
Right, I don't wanna say, I don't wanna say. That that amount is a good amount, a good, but it's not staggering amount, it's gonna make a difference to us, but it'll make a difference to the park department, and I would propose just to leave it alone.
It's a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars.
That was part of our discussion to adopt the twenty twenty-two budget. Any further discussion topics, Mr. Went?
Well, I I I completely agree. I I think, as, uh, Alderman Williams said, uh, I wish we would have kept it with the taxpayers, but the fact that, uh, we are taking it from the taxpayers, I would rather it stay with the parks.
Which in turn comes back to the taxpayers, that's another perspective. All right, are we, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. I see one more motion needed, revised calendar. Am I not up there, is I'm here? Is that where we're at?
That's a good question.
They've got them all.
I think we got them all.
Thank you.
Well, I think the revised calendar was that.
Oh, I'm sorry, you are right. We were looking at, since we were able to accomplish everything ahead of schedule, um, we were going to ask if we could cancel the meeting on the thirtieth.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Meyer is mentioning to cancel the meeting on November thirtieth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Messias, discussion, Mr. Went.
Uh, I think we just had a discussion on work sessions. How many things we've got to talk, we've got, and so many things we gotta talk about that we're scared that we don't have enough time to talk about all those things. I think it would be silly to, uh, uh, now, I'm not saying that it needs to be a, uh, a regular council meeting, but we surely could use it as a, uh, work session, um, that, I, I mean.
The stormwater policy.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, I mean, there there's, there's, there's a number of things that, uh, Bob can come back with, you know, you prioritize what you think the first thing that we should talk about and what you've got bandwidth to talk about by the thirtieth, but we've got a list that we gave to you, let's.
I just wanna get some clarification, so I thought the one that discussion was had about the roundtable discussions of special topics, that was for the new calendar, the twenty twenty-two calendar.
That's how, that's how we talked about it, I think that the council minutes just.
But I'll do it the council wants.
He's just mentioning.
They serve at their pleasure.
We should, there there are things to get caught up on.
Ca- canceling something, well, there's plenty of things for us to talk about.
Okay, any further discussion? Anyone in favor of canceling? Any one opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, uh, I, that didn't sound like everyone.
There was a motion, yeah, there was a motion seconded.
There was a motion that was seconded.
And then his motion was to cancel it?
Yes.
Nay.
Nay.
All right, I need to do a roll call just 'cause that was.
Alderman Waldron, was nay. Schmidt?
Nay.
Williams?
Nay.
Messias?
Nay.
Went?
Nay.
Timian?
Nay.
Meyer?
Aye.
All right, Alderman O'Brien.
Sure, I'll go on.
Two ayes, six nays.
All right, that concludes our work session, correct? There's no further public comment, so we'll close out the committee of the whole and move to council meeting. Plaid of allegiance, please.
Plaid of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite in justice.
Do we have an invocation?
Any invocation, Mr. Waldron? No.
Is it me? No.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Present.
Messias?
Present.
Went?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Meyer?
Present.
O'Brien?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
I request approval of council meeting minutes of October twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, committee of the whole and council meeting minutes of October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, and the appointment made during committee of the whole, November second, twenty twenty-one. Second meeting ordinances. Council Bill thirty thirty dash twenty twenty-one, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-seven, purchasing of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section twenty-seven dash forty-one oh three, legal requirements, by adding procedural amendments to conform with the requirements cited in the recent HUD audit. Resolutions. Council Bill twelve oh eight dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution approving change order number one and final of Blame and Construction Incorporated for project number thirteen forty-six, sanitary crossing under John Deere Road, four thousand block, for the amount of two thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Should we have done to approve the, the consent agenda first?
That was the consent agenda.
Okay, move to approve this consent agenda.
Second.
Oh, I see it down there, okay.
All right, motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Sorry about that.
We actually need a roll call.
Oh, my lord, thank you, it's right there.
Yeah, I get it.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. And that motion passes, not consent agenda resolutions. Council Bill twelve oh nine dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution adopting the city of Moline pension obligation bond policy.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Timian. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's the backwards. I'm sorry, Alderman Messias?
Aye.
Aye? I'm gonna keep going, Alderman Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Thank you, Alderman Meyer?
Aye.
O'Brien? Mayor Ryaputti?
Aye.
And that motion passes, and that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
The lady, it's Mr. Williams.
I'm happy to report that Carson's park fence is down and that the new fence is up, and it seems to be overwhelmingly a huge success in the neighborhood. There's very few people that, uh, have a problem with it, and I'm glad that the Parks Department had the, uh, the guts to stick to their guns and and go through with the plan that they saw, and it, uh, they're enjoying the park, and citizens of the First Ward will be better served with no fence.
That's great, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Messias?
Uh, nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
No, Mr. Turner?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Your Honor, since we're gonna have a meeting on the thirtieth, if the. If the private versus public on stormwater is ready, or the casino or, uh, gambling, uh, if either of those are ready to discuss, I think those, either a topic would be good for the thirtieth.
Yeah.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, that was gaming, and what was?
Gaming licensing issue.
Public versus private property for stormwater.
Okay, thanks.
That's a great topic.
Oh, we'll, we'll be on that.
Do you have anything, Mr. Vipass?
No, Madam Mary.
Any other stuff? All right, I need, um, no more public comment? Motion?
Yeah.
To adjourn. Mr. Went, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Meyer, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.